I'm going to open the regular meeting for November 18th, 2021. And I would like to first introduce some of the commissioners. We have Mr. Bob Schwartz, who represents Bowling Green. Leon Smith, who represents Church. Carol Horton, who represents Port Royal. Priscilla Minor. Matt Pannoy. And I'm George Reba, I represent Madison. And tonight, we have a new commissioner, Scott Sullivan, Scott Sullivan, who represents Weston, Carolina. In the staff, we have Mr. Fincham, Mike Fincham, Chris McKenzie, our county attorney, David Nunley, our senior environmental, and Lisa Zach, our administration. And right now, I'd like to ask if you would all rise and let's say the allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing I'd like to do is have a motion from one of the commissioners in reference to the minutes from August and September 2021. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Heard a second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, guys. First thing we have is a subdivision application. It's SB 10-2021 from WHC Associates. Staff, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your first agenda item tonight is SB 10-2021, which is a preliminary subdivision for two lots on the north side of Route 639, adjacent to the McDonald's site in Lady Smith. As you are aware, there is a Sheets convenience store under construction on the subject property. The developer of that is proposing to subdivide the property to create two parcels. Parcel one of 2.5 acres will be the actual Sheetz site. Parcel two, where the remainder of approximately 3.75 acres is for future development. The properties already have been subject to site plan approval, which include the identification of the entrances or access points that will serve the subject properties. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plat, and we believe it meets the ordinance requirements and therefore can be approved by the planning commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have any questions in reference to this application? Well, having been involved with this for quite a long time, this still allows them to come in off of 639 and go around behind parcel one, is that correct, Michael? I've just asked, I'm sorry, you should have done it before.
No, that's fine. Yes, sir. There's actually two entrances. There's a right in, right out about halfway between the full access and the McDonald's site. There's also a full service access just to the west or left of the Sheets parcel that you're looking at. That access will serve as the future extension of New Green Road, what we refer to as New Green Road. It will be the location of signalized traffic, signalized intersection for development on both the north and south sides of Lady Smith Road.
So the area is basically, parcel one is Sheetz property, is that correct? That's the one we're building? Okay, so now people can come in and when they want to go to this parcel 52-3, they go around past Sheets in the back and then come in from that side?
They can either use the right in off of 639 between McDonald's and the Sheets. Okay, there'll be a right in, right out there. They can either access there. If they miss that, they'll be able to go and turn at the Sheets and enter through the rear of the property.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michael.
And Mike, there could be a light there at Sheets?
Yes, there'll be a signalized intersection, yes, sir. And if you will recall, on the south side of that was the Lady Smith Crossing, which was to be the location of Walmart, which opted not to build.
So now, Michael, what are they doing on what are they doing on that side of the property? I see pipes, I see all this stuff going on where Walmart was going to go.
Yes, they're actually, right now, there's an agreement between Walmart, between Blackwood Development Corporation and VDOT to relocate a stormwater management pond that was to be on the side of Route 639. That's being relocated interior to the Blackwood property. So the site work on the south side of 639 is related to the Route 639 improvements.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
So Mike, if I was coming off 95 South and turning into McDonald's, the driveway still will be there?
The driveway will still be there, but once the Route 639 improvements are completed, that will be a right in, right out. So you won't be able to make a left out of the McDonald's and come back to the interchange. You'll actually have to go through the lots that are subject to this preliminary plat approval to get back to the signalized intersection to come back to the interchange.
All this will be same time the Sheets can be built, all this?
Sheets will probably be finished before the Route 639 improvements are completed, but all that has been coordinated with VDOT.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Fincham, why are you up here? Remind me again, McDonald's is first, behind that is Sheets.
There's a parcel to be developed and then
and then Sheets.
Sheets, that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
So we're now only looking at this, Michael, from a standpoint of preliminary plat?
Approval.
Approval.
And if the commission approves the preliminary, then final approval will be by staff.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, please?
Mr. Fincham, if there is a delay between the time that Sheets is completed and in operation and the time that the traffic light is installed to enable motorists to make a left back on 639, do we have any idea what the time interval would be on that? Because I want to see any mishaps because we don't have a traffic signal.
The traffic signal will be installed. That was a condition of the permit for site plan approval for the Sheets. So the traffic signal will be installed. There will be some coordination necessary between VDOT and the developer regarding the location and the improvements. Those have actually all been worked out between VDOT and the applicant. So the signalization will be in place even while the Route 639 project continues.
Okay, and when you say it will be installed, I assume that that means operational as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Then I would ask for a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, whereas the preliminary plat submitted appears to meet the requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinance, I recommend that SB 10-2021 for WHC be approved as submitted.
Second. Heard a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion is now carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Michael. All right, the next application is SPEX-03-2021 Brown Assisted Living Facility. And staff, please, first.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your next item under unfinished business is XPEX-03-2021, Sandra Brown, owner and applicant. She's requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article 17, Section 13, and Article 4, Section 5.11 to allow assisted living facility on tax map 102-A-37. The commission will recall, you actually previously held your public hearing on this matter. I believe that was two meetings ago. And action was deferred for the applicant to provide some additional information that was requested by members of the commission. That information has been provided. We did receive the last bit of information Friday morning after the actual staff report had been prepared. So you have a brief cover memo that addresses the additional information that was provided. If you will recall, the Board of Supervisors previously approved a special exception for this same use a number of years ago. But that special exception permit was void due to inactivity. And the applicant is back seeking reapproval for that same use that was previously proposed.
Thank you, Michael. Carol, you read this. This is one of the issues. You wanted to see what the interior is going to look like, so I'll throw the ball to you. If that's okay.
Well, I'd like to commend the applicant for, you know, going out and working on the concerns that we had. And so I'm much more satisfied than I was last time.
Have there been, Michael, have there been any issues from our building department in reference to what they're seeing here?
No, the plans that have submitted are really more conceptual in nature. So it hasn't been through the full plan review of the building department. That would be performed either concurrent with or after the completion of the site plan.
Okay, good.
Is applicant here tonight?
I can't speak to that.
I see the applicant raised his hand, Carol.
Or Representative?
Representative applicant.
Any comments?
Good evening. John Bennett with AES Consulting Engineers, with Civil Engineer made application on the project. We were here back in August representing it. Sandra Brown is here as well tonight for the project. Everything that was said is, we concur with. The applicant got the building plans together so we could address what the interior of the building would look like. And good point was made that it is conceptual in nature and certainly all the finer points are code dimensioning, construction drawings. That certainly comes later, but this is really to give you a look at what's happening inside of the building, general layout, so you can get a good look at that. I believe all the dimensional requirements for the site itself, I think we've covered that with staff in the prior meetings. I feel like we're square with you all on that. So really, the applicant is looking to continue with the investment in the property and kind of take steps forward to hopefully move beyond special exception and then into the site plan and building permit drawings. So we appreciate everything. We'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
And once again, how far are we seeing this facility is off the road? I know it's directly on the road, but how many feet is the building?
Gosh, it's an existing building, is, I guess you know, it's at least 100 feet off the road.
Okay.
Mr. Bennett, during the previous presentation, we had some discussion as to whether the rooms would, some of the rooms would be private versus semi-private. And I noticed in the application, it was for 25 beds. Yet in the proposed floor plan that we have, we have 10 rooms that are double occupancy for a total of 20. So somewhere along the line, I don't know if we've lost five or what. But that's something that I think the applicant and Department of Social Services can work out in their licensing.
Yes, sir.
One of the questions came up is that the zoning requires 12.5 parking spaces, and I think they had 13. Some of those, of course, would be taken by employees and staff. And I don't know how many would remain for visitors. But I think that there is room available for additional parking. And I would be hopeful that Ms. Brown would increase the number of parking spaces should the need arise, depending upon what the visitation is. So, you know, if that's something that she would consider, I think that would make us more at ease with it also.
Yeah, we do look forward to working closely with staff, continuing to do so on those sorts of details as we move into site plan. When it gets into those specifics, we have provided, you know, one space for every two beds at this point. And if staff would like to see there be an increased number, as you correctly stated, we do have adequate space on the site to accommodate those sorts of things. So those are sorts of things that can certainly be massaged into the plan. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. My question is, how old are the people that's going to be in these rooms?
Yeah, my understanding is it's 55 and older.
55 and old. Because I'm looking at two people to a room, correct?
Yes, that's what's represented on the plan.
So how is, some would have wheelchairs, have walkers? Are they going to be able to deal with that? I remember the hallway going mighty narrow. And that comes down through there.
Yeah, and again, this plan is conceptual. And as we get further along into this, those sorts of details will be added. And if the code mandates it, as we work with building department, as the architect works with them, if things need to be adjusted, that can certainly be done. Yes, sir.
So you want to have two assistants at 24/7?
A minimum of two employees will be there at any given time. Yes, sir.
Priscilla, any questions, Priscilla? Priscilla, any?
Question from Mr., okay.
Yes.
When they get to a stage saying that the rounds are not the size they're supposed to be, will the county won't let them get a permit? Who's looking at that part?
The actual code details will be vetted during the plan review process for the actual building construction plans. So at the end of the day, if they don't have sufficient area, say, for example, for two beds per bedroom, then that will be vetted during the plan and review process, and they might very well end up with one bed. So it's really going to be driven by the code requirements for the use.
Thank you.
And there's nothing about this special exception that's grandfathered or anything because the building, you know, was used before.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, they have to, all the new codes.
They have to follow the current codes that are in effect. They'll be subject to the same timeframes related to the special exception permit. And if there is a period of inactivity, again, run the risk of losing the special exception as well. So I think they understand they need to go forward.
Thanks.
Carol, that's why they lost it last time, because they had the special exception and they didn't do anything.
Yeah, I know.
So therefore, it just fell apart, so.
Scott, I do have a question. Going back to the number of beds that are proposed, looks like 25. I understand that the drawings are conceptual in nature, but are the dimensions accurate? So in other words, I'm looking at, you know, 13 point, or it looks like a 13 square foot or potentially 13 by 13 room? Is that the actual size of the facility if you, you know, look at your right and left limit?
Yeah, the drawing is to scale. It is architectural scale. It is showing actual rooms, actual dimensions. That's correct. The special exception we're seeking is for up to 25 beds. What you're seeing is a conceptual drawing that shows a possible layout. Certainly, there's a number of ways to lay out the building. This is one. Could it change? Certainly. And what was mentioned about being vetted through the code review process, that's all part of the design process that happens. So this is very early at this point.
Okay.
So we wanted to give you a good rendition of what it could look like.
Right, I was looking at the drawing. I'm trying to figure out where you'd get the extra rooms for five additional people beyond what's displayed here. And it would look to me that you'd almost have to lose some of these other areas to do that.
I think Scott, when I did it, I think if you look at where the dining room area is, it looks like that was going to be another room that they decided they could make that into a dining room space.
Right, yeah.
Not saying that's what they were going to do, but, and I think that's why we're looking at this because the special exception that we're looking to do is to allow this to progress forward from where we are now. Okay, and Carol was the one who brought up, she wanted to see the interior, and I appreciated that at that time. So I think that's, I think that's where we are right now, is questioning, looking at this and saying, okay, can we now allow this special exception to move forward? And again, let the building department and the health department and whoever else gets involved, let them regulate what we don't know and don't understand.
One question for Mike. So the state would monitor this facility once it's operational? Or would that be Health and Human Services?
I think given the size, it's probably the Department of Social Services, but there will be state oversight and licensure of this facility.
Okay.
And Mr. Fincham, just a little food for thought and general information. I believe DSS has minimum standards that they will accept as to the square footage for living conditions. So in order to get licensing from DSS, they're going to have to comply with at least the minimum standards. I don't know what they are, but we certainly don't want to see folks stacked in like sardines. And I don't think DSS would allow that, but that's just from past experience of dealing with DSS. They're pretty stringent on their standards.
And I think the building code regs will add to that. I mean, certainly, if you have ambulatory patients, you have to have sufficient, you know, hallway width, et cetera, for wheelchair access, et cetera. So all that will be addressed by the code requirements.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Applicant, Michael, are we okay with this one? Can we move forward this?
Yes, sir. I think the commission can forward it with a recommendation as it sees fit.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
And where's the public necessary convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice warrants and approval? This request, I recommend that SPEX-03-2021 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors where they recommend our approval with the conditions added to that.
Oh, second.
Heard a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Oh, a solar project. I have a question, Mike. Something came up, and I just want to make sure I'm on the right page. All the public hearings we've had before are now closed, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, so that anybody who was here during those public hearings understands that those hearings are now closed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, shall we move on to Rock Solar Center? And we have this in, it's also SPEX-10-21. Can we handle both at the same time, Mr. Fincham?
I can discuss both of those at the same time since they are tied together. Yes, sir.
Okay, please do so.
It is, the commission recalls, and we've had discussions with Mr. Sullivan as well related to the regulations. The Board of Supervisors adopted two sets of regulations governing the siting of solar facilities in the county. One set of regulations were for your major solar energy facilities in excess of 20 megawatts of generating capacity. That will be SPX-10. Those regulations also created standards, some of which allowed the Board of Supervisors to modify some of these standards through a review of the issue at hand and a specific special exception review related to a waiver of a development standard. One of the development standards that was established was that no solar energy facility could be within one half mile of a primary growth area. Dawn is designated as a primary growth area, and a portion of this project would be within that one half mile buffer and part of the primary growth area, primarily with the connection between the facility itself and the existing utility line to which it would be connected. The applicant has requested a special exception permit, specifically requesting a waiver to that development standard to allow the encroachment within the one half mile buffer and the growth area. You previously held a public hearing on this matter, and a number of the planning commissioners did make a site visit to the site. And there had been no suggested changes by staff in your conditions for consideration since that last public hearing. The second item, SPX-10-2021, is a special exception request for the solar facility itself. You have a GDP that was included. Um, you have a GDP that was included uh in your packet which uh showed the general location of the proposed solar panels and all the ancillary uses thereto. Uh, again, the commission or most of the commission members uh were able to make a site visit to the site uh to to um, to to look at the facility and and the surrounding area uh after hearing the concerns that were raised by uh a number of residents in the area. Even uh after the commission makes its recommendation, uh staff uh believes there will be uh continued discussions related to conditions. Certainly, when we get to the board, the board will be seeking or or probably be seeking additional conditions above and beyond uh what what has been recommended to the commission. Uh, so the development of those conditions, uh, you know, I think would be viewed as an ongoing process.
And I, Michael, I appreciate that. And um, I think that one of the questions that came up the last time around was the oh nine, the SPEX oh nine, okay? It only relates to that little extension on the end of their property to the power line, is that correct?
Uh, it includes a small portion, it it includes the extension. I believe it may include some soul, a a small area, the solar panels themselves as well. Uh, but it it's anything that would be within the the half mile uh buffer to the growth area.
Questions, please, gentlemen? Mr. Fincham, if you'd help us out?
Mr. Chairman, I have a problem with that. And the reason I have, because even though respect nine and ten ties them together. Number one, I don't believe that the owners were upfront with the members of the community. They sent out documents later when they decided to come through the board. I've been receiving all types of uh mail and uh telephone calls indicating that it, and they didn't want this in the area. And I can understand that. Because to me, when we start out doing anything, we need to talk to the people and get some kind of input from what what they're thinking, not what I'm thinking. I'm thinking I want to do business, but the people in the community has to have some idea of what you're doing and whether they prefer to have that. And that's not what I'm seeing. And that's why I'm saying that I I'm not going to be able to uh uh sanction that in in my uh voting.
Mr. Schwartz, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everyone knows how I feel about solar facilities. But uh, under the general district standards, item two, like Mr. Fincham stated, the project shall not be located on property within one half mile of the boundary of a designated growth area as identified in the Carolina County Comprehensive Plan. Ladies and gentlemen, we either say what we mean and mean what we say. We start chipping away and it's going to be a continuing process. It won't be the last time that we have someone coming and asking for a spe- special exemption on something like this. We have heard the people in the area that are going to be affected by this project. The only one that I recall, and I'm looking at my notes, the only one that was in favor of it was Mr. Ingles, the property owner. And I am not going to be able to support SPEX oh nine.
Priscilla.
I don't think we know enough about solar to pass this.
Well, we've been working on solar farms and educating ourselves for two years. And I I realize it's new to the public and they're afraid. And I think it's our job to help educate them on something that may save their community. Yes, we should say what we mean. And a few months ago, everyone up here, except for Mr. Sullivan, he wasn't present, approved that we were going to have solar farms, you know, in Caroline County. I mean, if we didn't want them, we probably should have said something at that point before we passed the ordinance. But I've done a lot of research, I did research before two years on these and I visited them. And this area is a primary growth area. It's minutes, literally minutes from I ninety five. And if if something isn't done to preserve this farmland, and we can't, we can't zone it for no houses. I had a constituent ask that. We we can't do that. We can't tell someone that they can't put homes on their farmland. So if we don't do something, i- it is going to turn into a um, probably a lot of subdivisions. Internet is being approved in that area and then the houses will probably go up within the next twenty years. Because, I mean, that's what people want. They want cheaper homes, which is available in Carolina, and they want to work from their home. So you'll have a a new, a whole new community within twenty years if we don't do something to preserve that land. It's t- it's ten acre lots right now with one cutoff, so that's two houses per every ten acres. And uh, I s- I mean, I I've seen it happen before. That, I mean, I'm on a family farm and that's how our family farm's been chipped away. First AP Hill took some away from my great grandparents and then my grandparents struggled and and you just, if you, if you're not proactive or if we're not proactive, we're going to lose our rural community. Um, I understand when people don't want something. I always try to take that in consideration. But I can tell you, the commission up here and the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Office, we've just had a lot more access to this information over time. If you want to see what a solar panel looks like, go over to Thornburg. In about a mile south of Thornburg, there is a home that has two large solar panels sitting out in their yard. So that's what they look like. They're kind of portable, they sit there. These would be sitting in the middle of the field, surrounded by fences. There would be access between fields for wildlife. Uh, trees will be covering it. And the land still belongs to the farmer. It's rented for solar panels for up to fifty years. And then after that, it has to be returned to farmland if the rental agreement's not included. It it cannot be, the land cannot be disturbed. It's not a gravel mine, which we have about nine or ten of those in Caroline County. It is not fracking, which I was one of the leaders in fighting that off in Caroline County. This and I, and this this past, since our last meeting, I've even called and looked into how we can do this in coordination with wildlife. And the Audubon Society, which is well known for helping birds and small mammals, even has a plan how solar farms can become a habitat for birds and small mammals. Um, the trees there will be, yeah, big, the trees that will be planted about around this will be a big access uh for wildlife and and for birds. Um, so I ju- I just feel like it's my job to protect that land. Um, I've just seen too many farmers lose it. And I know, you know, the last hundred years, you know, my family is just lost so much. So I feel for them. I understand, you know, I usually don't, you know, go against the citizens and I understand that they're afraid of it. But um, I've been in preservation in Caroline County almost thirty years and this will protect you from having a lot of development around you for maybe up to fifty years, which is the lifetime of a lot of people in here. So that's my stand.
Thank you, Carol. Scott, please, by all means.
So Mike, I've got a couple of questions. Um, when we, when the county decided in the ordinance to come up with the numbers of uh megawatts for the county, I think the total number for majors is six hundred and the for minors is a hundred. And if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was based on the total land mass in Caroline County?
We looked at the total acreage, we looked at the uh Virginia Energy Plan and the uh projected uh needs for renewable energy sources through the year uh twenty forty. Um, and out of that backed into or calculated what we thought was an appropriate amount for Caroline County.
Okay, um, so was con- was consideration given that AP Hill comprises a large portion of the county and that land mass?
Yes.
Okay. So was that deducted from the total and and how you came to those numbers?
Yes, e- even even without AP Hill, you you still have uh, you know, roughly three hundred and twenty thousand or three hundred thousand acres of land in the county. So um, there's considerable land area available. W- we also looked at um the larger facilities, um, wanting to cite them in close proximity to existing uh power lines that um uh for access so that you didn't, I'll use the term daisy chain, um, properties uh and create new new power lines across great distances. Um, the smaller facilities don't have the stringent connection requirements in in terms of line capacity. So there are smaller lines out there where some of the smaller projects could could be located. So that was taken into consideration as well.
Okay. What about storage facilities? Have, does this applicant have any plans for a storage facility?
Uh, if he does or not permitted.
Okay. All right.
Our regulations specifically do not address storage facilities. Uh, and the board has not wanted to entertain that.
Okay. All right. So a couple of other items, I I noticed that it's a seventy one megawatt nameplate capacity.
Yes.
Uh, with that, it, that's a condition, so they would not be allowed to generate more and that, or is?
That's correct. That would be the cap, the max.
So, you know, I guess the question I have with that is, as technology changes, uh, companies come up with many more efficient ways to produce electricity, you know, whether it's through a process or just maybe, you know, some modification that they can do. If that was the case, and let's say this facility was approved at some point and they were able to generate more megawatts based on the same set of uh panels that they have at the, at that facility at that time, I I'm not sure that we'd, I'm not sure I'd want to limit them like that. I think the second piece of that goes to that meeting that total number of megawatts. Um, I I'm concerned that if, you know, setting a six hundred uh megawatt limit, which I I'm fine with, and you, oh, you, uh, let's say we approved enough facilities to meet that six hundred megawatt goal. With conditions like that on an applicant, it it just seems counterintuit- or counterproductive that we could maybe have fewer facilities and meet that megawatt threshold.
I I think we need some accounting provisions in order to ensure that we don't exceed either the one hundred or six hundred megawatt cap, which is basically how the regulations were crafted. The special exception permit would would create a maximum capacity. The actual capacity would be based on what the final approved uh size of the facility is. So we could approve it for seventy megawatts, maybe it ends up being sixty five, okay? That sixty five is what counts towards that cap. Some point in time, we don't want to overbuild in terms of of facilities. Uh, but we needed an accounting process to to allow us to monitor what's been approved, um, what's been built, what doesn't get built. That was all tied, this process is all tied and 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 the the caps that are in the special exception permits are tied to calculating when we reach those overall caps.
Okay.
The board can certainly amend that in a future date if it so desires. Um, but, you know, and part of that was also, this is our first rodeo with with solar and and uh we felt the need to uh take a measured approach versus opening the doors.
Okay. So a couple of other questions, I, when I reviewed the packet, um, there's a lot of information in there. Uh, I didn't see anything about any maintenance interval that's performed on the solar panels. Um, typically with anything, manufacturers have specified maintenance periodicities or frequencies. So I'm not really sure what that would consist of. Uh, I would, you know, like to see a condition that said something along the lines that, you know, the applicant would meet any manufacturer specifications for periodicities um and then document those for, you know, potential review by, you know, the county at some point. Uh, another, you know, thing I was looking at was, you know, obviously, I think, you know, our political, uh, you know, times that we're in right now, I think there's a big push for renewables. Um, I know there's subsidies that are tied with these facilities. And, you know, one of the concerns I have is if if these subsidies run out um and maybe solar's not as lucrative anymore. Once a facility, let's say, if it were to be abandoned or maybe not producing electricity to the grid any longer, I would think that there'd be a time period that if it was inactive, regardless of the duration of the limit that was uh allowed for one of these to work, that we would consider it being abandoned or, you know, entering the decommission process. I've looked at many other counties uh that have solar and have approved them. It seems like many of them do have a specific timeframe, whether it's twenty four months or forty eight months for periods like that. I think that might be something else that we would want to consider as a condition.
We actually do address that, at least in part, in the standards.
Okay.
Uh, abandonment of a of a site and decommissioning requirement, so.
Is there a timeframe?
If it, if it fails to, if it doesn't produce electricity, and I believe it is twenty four months, um, then then by ordinance, decommissioning uh is required.
Okay.
But to the extent there are any gaps in that, certainly we can add that.
So one of the last questions I have is, you know, it it looks like there is some lowland areas in that general vicinity. And I understand that, you know, when they put these in, they're, you know, they're driven into the ground, the poles are to mount them on. There's a certain compaction that that, you know, ground is compacted to, so it maintains its uh stability for the panel itself. So rainwater, I know those are, you know, typically one of the bigger concerns. Um, it looks like there are some provisions in here to, you know, I don't know, conduct surveys after. I think one of the conditions is after a certain amount of rain, the applicant has to perform those. Can you tell me more about what actions the county would take if they identify excessive runoff in streams or, you know?
Our, well, let me step back. Stormwater management is actually regulated by Virginia DEQ. Uh, so so we have no authority there. Um, some years back, uh, under the the stormwater regulations, localities were allowed the opportunity to to manage their own stormwater program. We opted not to do that, um, in part because of our concern about the disarray of the regulations um and the obligations that would would be imposed upon the county. So we opted out, DEQ is the stormwater permitting authority. They are, that agency is the one that will review the stormwater management plans um and ultimately issue a a stormwater permit or or stormwater coverage for that facility. So they would be the ones looking at the So they would be the ones looking at the, you know, compaction calculations for stormwater runoff, et cetera. We're primarily looking at it from the erosion and sediment control perspective during construction. The amount of land that's actually open to land disturbance at any one time, making sure the ENS controls installed are adequate for an identified rain event. If there is a, what we call runoff producing event, we want to make sure that, that the site is evaluated as quickly as possible to identify whether there are any off-site impacts from stormwater runoff and ensure that that's mitigated as quickly as possible. I think everybody, well, shouldn't say everybody. A lot of people probably heard about the incident in Louisa where they had a stormwater event from a solar facility over there. And there've been a couple of others around as well. That's also a board concern and, and trying to figure out how to mitigate that and ensure that that doesn't happen in Caroline County, I think is probably one of the top priorities of the board. So it's enhanced inspections. There are provisions for aerial surveys after a storm. That's where areas that we can't get to, to inspect. Our regulations require that, or allow us to hire a third-party inspector that the developer is responsible for reimbursing the county for, for the cost of that inspector so that we could actually have somebody out on site much more frequently than we would have at, say, another construction site, simply because we are aware of the issues.
Okay, so, so that, I, just so I understand correctly, and that specifically is condition number eleven. An aerial survey of the perimeter of the site should be conducted to identify any off-site sedimentation or erosion issues. After any rain event, producing one inch of rain in a twenty-four hour period, a video of the survey shall be submitted to the planning department. That's
Yes.
specific to construction.
Yes.
So upon operation, these conditions would not apply?
We could actually continue that, I think, if, if we, if, if it was determined that there were still issues.
Okay.
And that's something that we can certainly look at.
Okay, alright, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Well, there's something that I would like to mention to you, Mr. Sullivan. I don't know if you're aware, because it is lowland, and that's why it's called frog level. But, and they're, they are not allowed to put the panels, you know, on wetlands, they're, they are blocked off. But there is a stormwater issue existing in that area off the site. If I'm correct, Mr. Fincham, there was, we've got some photograph off the site, there's some runoff of water. It's not where the solar panels are going to go. And the company proffered to fix that area if, if the solar farm is approved, correct, Mr. Fincham?
There were actually two issues identified. One was a neighboring property that has experienced increased runoff dating back roughly, I'm gonna say eight to nine years from when a wooded area was cleared, converted to, to cropland. And then just to crop, the, the farming practices have led to increased runoff on a neighbor, neighbor's property. And, and the applicant has indicated a willingness to, to address those concerns. There was a second issue that was raised that is actually in another watershed entirely and not affected by this project. So there, there's, there were two that were raised. One actually is, is an abutting property to, to the site and, and is experiencing problems now.
Oh, yeah, that's one of the things. And of course, and additionally, I'm, I'm sure you're aware that, you know, the, the county will receive a lot of tax revenue and, and revenue sharing from the projects, which we need for our schools.
So, yeah, I've, I've seen that. I do have another question. So we've got two of these and it looks like one is for that, you know, extension. Does it mean that if you don't approve that, both, it, it impacts both of these special exceptions?
If, if you do not approve SPX zero nine, which is the exception, then that definitely affects SPEX ten dash twenty twenty-one. So you can't, you can't approve twenty twenty-one without, I mean, you can't approve SPEX ten without approving SPEX zero nine.
And that's where, we discussed that last time, that if O nine is turned down, then there's no sense proceeding with O ten.
Well, you have an application, I think you're, you still need to act, or you still need to make a recommendation.
Okay, so we still have to make two motions. And I do know where Carol's coming from. How people keep laughing, you know, it's the good old city boy, but as I told people, I used to live on two thousand acres of farmland. Well, I do appreciate the farms and I understand what Carol has said many times. And this is how we got into this discussion last time. I think by allowing these solar projects to proceed is going to slow down the amount of development, housing development, which puts strains on our schools and so forth and so on. So I guess what we're gonna do is we'll have a motion and I'll see where it goes from there.
And one more thing, we're only allowing a total of seven, right now, seven hundred megawatts within the whole county, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, there's only going to be a certain amount within this county. It's, it's not a open door.
And to that, Mr. Chairman, here again, not to go point, counterpoint. These solar facility companies will be back at our table asking for an increase over that seven hundred. No doubt about it. Now, as far as, I, I don't think we have developers beating down the doors trying to buy up farms to put in subdivisions at this point. Thank goodness, I'm with you. But that is way off in the future, I believe. There's a whole lot of infrastructure that would have to be built up in order to support those subdivisions. And a solar facility is not going to put food on our table.
Understood, Mr. Schwartz.
Oh, but the developers don't need our approval to put two houses on ten acres.
No, but it's still somewhat controlled. It, it, it's not like they're going side by side in a subdivision like you would see in Henrico County, for example, where, you know.
But I mean, just.
I'm with you, I, I'm with you on that.
If we're not proactive, it, it's coming, it might come faster, like the pandemic came faster than we thought.
But, but I still say we need to take care of our ag land.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz, I think at this particular stage, I'd like to hear a motion from you, if I may. I have to, but Michael, we don't have to make two. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
You do have to make two motions.
Yeah, you wanna make, you can, you can call anyone who wants to make a motion on SPX O nine twenty twenty-one. I would start with that one and then proceed from there.
Okay, but Chris, if, let's assume that a motion is made on the O nine and it is turned down by this board, then why would we proceed with ten? I'm just asking.
Because you still have an application pending before you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Mr. Schwartz?
We're going with nine and ten, right? No, just nine?
We have to do two, but we're gonna start with nine.
Nine, Chris. Whereas special exception requests spec zero nine twenty twenty-one for frog solar systems appears to be generally inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and further land, and future land use maps. Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices warrants the denial of the request. I recommend that spec nine twenty twenty-one be forwarded to the board of supervisor, board supervisors with a recommendation of denial. Second.
Can hear other votes, please?
Okay, we're gone.
We'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schwartz, how do you vote?
I vote to deny, how, whether you take that as a yea or nay.
So the motion on the table is, Mr. Smith made was to deny SPX O nine twenty twenty-one. Mr. Schwartz seconded, Mr. Schwartz votes nay, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
I'm, aye, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Minor?
Nay.
Here, there's a motion to deny.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah.
So if you are, if you are in support of denial, you would vote in the, you would vote to approve the motion to deny. If you, it, it's a little bit inverted and, and I'm not, you vote however you want to vote, but I want to make sure that you're correctly communicating your votes. This is a motion for denial of SPX O nine. So if you want to deny that special exception application, you would vote aye on that motion. If you want to approve that special exception application, you would vote nay on that motion to deny. Right now, we have an aye from Mr. Schwartz in support of denial and nays from Mr. Minor, I believe, and Mr. Smith, which would mean you support approval of SPX O nine.
Oh.
Okay, why, so why don't, why don't we start the vote over?
Okay.
Please do, Mr.
All right, let's, let's, let's begin at the beginning. SPX O nine twenty twenty-one, Mr. Smith motions to deny, Mr. Schwartz seconds. So the roll, roll call vote, how do you vote, Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Minor?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
I'm against it.
So nay, okay. Dr. Horton?
Nay.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Okay, so that means the motion will carry.
Correct, four, four to two.
No clapping, please.
Alright, shall we now move along to?
Ten.
Ten. SPX ten twenty twenty-one, Mr. Schwartz?
You need a motion on this as well, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Whereas special extension request SPEX one zero twenty twenty-one for frog solar systems, I'll get it out in a minute, Frog Solar Center appears to be generally inconsistent with the goals and objectives of comprehensive plan and future land use map. And whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices warrants the denial of this request, I recommend that SPEX one zero two zero twenty-one be forwarded to the board of supervisors with a recommended donation of denial.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Schwartz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Minor?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Nay.
Dr. Horton?
Nay.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Four to two. Can we take a five-minute break before we went to the public hearings, Michael? Is that okay? We'll take a, just a five-minute break before we went to the public hearings. Yeah, yes, could be forever. We're gonna go on to public hearings. And I'll wait till Lisa gets back to our microphone. I'll wait for you to get back to your microphone. Lisa, can you read the protocol for public hearings, please? Can't hear.
Yeah, I'm noticing that. Is that better?
Better.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The purpose of the public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of posit, a position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comments. Applicants or the representatives will be allowed fifteen minutes to introduce information regarding the matter for advertised for public hearing. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested. Keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. We, there will be a timer set up here that you all can see and the commission can see as well. After the public he, hearing has been closed, the applicant or their representative would be allowed ten minutes to address any issues identified by the public. If anyone is out there is speaking on behalf of a group of people, when you come up to speak, please identify, you know, where you're at, if you're a resident of Caroline, and where your group is from. And you will also get six minutes. Thank you.
We're gonna be addressing RZ oh seven twenty twenty one. Can I have a staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your first public hearing is RZ zero seven dash twenty twenty one, D.R. Horton, owner and applicant. They're requesting an amendment to an existing set of zoning proffers for Maple Grove subdivision. On tax map fifty-two dash E two dash one, blocks A through P, lots one through eighty-four. I believe that should be seventy-four. The property is located at seven thousand ninety-two Durant Road, approximately, uh, point three seven miles west of Jefferson Davis Highway and immediately adjacent to the YMCA. This property was subject to a previously approved rezoning, uh, for a age restricted development um, of about seventy-four units. The applicant is requesting an amendment to a proffer related to the age restriction language, not to change the requirements, but to clarify the language from the original proffer. The original proffer spoke to the age restriction in accordance with, with state and federal regulations, but then had a caveat about, uh, residents nineteen years of age that was somewhat confusing. So the applicant's request is to amend the proffer to clarify that language and, uh, to make sure that it's clear, yes, they're still in, uh, uh, gonna be in compliance with the uh, age restricted housing provisions of both the Commonwealth of Virginia and the federal regulations. Uh, and to further clarify that nobody under the age of nineteen uh, can, uh, live in such units for, for more than ninety days. So it's really a clarification. I think it's a good clarification. Um, and with that, I'll address any questions you may have.
So really, uh, Mr. Fincham, the only change really is in reference to the person who's nineteen years of age, they can only be in that dwelling for ninety days.
Under nineteen, under nineteen years of age, not more than ninety days.
Who controls that?
That would be in the proffers, and, and actually the county could control that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Since Mr. Fincham was there?
Yes, Mr. Fincham, if you please, sir.
I'm sorry, Michael, I tried to get you before you said that.
I forgot, I, oh.
You forgot I'm here, I know. Have there been any issues that, um, Maple Grove has experienced where an extended stay or an overnight visit, uh, from someone under the age of fifty-five, ha, have any issues arose or?
No, sir, we actually haven't built the first dwelling in there yet.
Okay.
So we're, we're trying to, to clarify this ahead of time.
Yeah, because I, I'm just wondering if, if someone has a grandchild, for example, come and spend the summer with them uh, for two or three months, does that qualify as a residence? And maybe that's a legal question, I don't know.
I, I think that would qualify under the ninety days. So if they're coming for the summer, they have that ninety day window that, um, that, that they could, um, stay with a grandparent, for example. Now, if it's ninety-one days, are we gonna?
I mean, who's gonna monitor?
It, it's really to, 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 to clarify the language, because the original language, y, y, you could argue could be read several ways.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
This person stayed for three months, correct?
Ninety days, mm-hmm.
And go away for a week, so that time starts again?
No, ninety days.
Okay.
We, we've had that tried in some of our campgrounds in the county, but, um, no.
Okay.
Is there anything in the language that would prevent that from occurring?
Uh, I think the language itself says that, that that would not be permitted, as, 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 as drafted.
All right, thank you.
Just by way of legal background, wh, what we're dealing with here, what, what the original proffers dealt with and what I think these amendments are targeted at is just conforming with the controlling law that already exists. So just for backgrounds who understand this, federal law and Virginia's analogous state law generally prohibits you from discriminating against who's living in a place, right? That's what the FHA does, and that's what the federal laws do. And what, what the laws at issue here are, there are exceptions to that prohibition, say, okay, you can't, you can't say people of a certain age can't live here, people of certain groups can't live here, but we're making an exemption to that, and you can say that fifty-five and older people are the only people allowed to live here. That's an exemption to that prohibition. And the federal law has more details on that. Um, and what these amendments are trying to do is clarify that the proffers are, are synced up with that federal and state law. Right, that allows that type of, I guess, permissible discrimination based on age.
Okay.
If that makes sense to you.
Right. So is the original proffer more restrictive than the law? Is that what you're?
The, I, I don't think so. It's a good question. I think the original proffer was just maybe a little ambiguous. It just said, the original proffer read that these are intended to be, um, occupied by persons fifty-five years and older, which is one of those exemption groups, and that they'll be occupied, or they'll, the occupancy will be, uh, comply with Virginia Fair Housing laws. And these amendments are adding in some language to pointing out that under Virginia Fair Housing Law and the federal laws, y, you are allowed to have twenty percent of the, of the population be, uh, younger than fifty-five, right? And, and this wasn't expressly stated in the original proffer, and I think these amendments are clarifying that the proffers are intended to mirror the federal and state law. After your, your questions for Mr. Fincham are concluded, the applicant will make a presentation and certainly can answer questions on, on their own intentions.
Well, I think as I read this, Mr. Fincham, I think this is very clear, okay? Because it said permitted to occupy any dwelling for more than ninety days in any twelve month period. That automatically cuts down for the ambiguity that might exist. Okay, is, um, any other questions, uh, commissioners? All right, can we have the applicant, please? Thank you, Michael.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I am Sherman Patrick with the, uh, with Compton and Dueling. We're here this evening representing D.R. Horton, who has purchased this property and is, uh, implementing the proffer conditions that were enacted on the property previously. With the exception of this proffer condition, which we found, uh, to be ambiguous, uh, staff has already sta, stated. It starts off saying that it wants to be consistent with federal and state statutes, uh, and then it proceeds to use a lot of extra words that are not in the federal and state statute. So what we really want to do here is to simply clean up the language, uh, and to make it very straightforward uh, and, and very consistent with the state regulations. With respect to the, uh, the ninety day period, this is frequently discussed in, in, um, in other locations. I've done a, a number of cases that have this sort of age restriction requirement. It, it is not saying here that, you know, we're trying to encourage people to come and stay for ninety days, but the federal statute does say that, uh, you can have people under eighteen years of age stay for up to ninety days. What we really expect, uh, is that, you know, children or grandchildren might come and visit their parents, they might be under nineteen years of age, uh, and they may stay for the weekend. The way that the proffer is currently written, it sounds as if they might not even be able to stay for the weekend. I don't think that's ever what was intended. I think, again, they just put too many words in the proffer. Uh, and, and to bring it to completely into alignment with the state and federal statute, uh, we have revised the language so that there's no future complication. These types of regulations, uh, become a part of the covenants. And within the covenants, they're enforced by the homeowners association, and homeowners association in these communities would have a management company and have legal counsel, and so, uh, their primary source of enforcement is that private sector or the, the homeowners within the community themselves, and of course, the county has a role too, if, if it becomes necessary. But I, I don't know of any instance where it's become necessary in the past. Uh, always the, the homeowners association and their management company is able to enforce these regulations without incident. So I don't think there are any, any examples of problems in this regard. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, but I think the staff did a pretty good job of, of summarizing what we're trying to do here. I, I only hope that my additional extra words aren't causing any confusion.
So we talked about, you know, pe, persons under the age of nineteen. Uh, it also looks like you're trying to adjust the, where it's fifty-five and older, and it looks like one person that's maybe not fifty-five could, could live in that dwelling as well. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So in other words, if you had a situation where a husband and wife were age difference, one hits fifty-five, one doesn't, it would allow that to occur, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And on the same token, sir, if someone were to become, uh, incapacitated, they could have, uh, a, a resident who is less than fifty-five who, who gives twenty-four hour care, uh, stay there.
That's also correct.
How, how many units are we building over there?
Seventy is the, the layout, uh, that is the most recent alignment.
Seventy. Thank you. Any more questions? I guess it's time to open the public hearing, is that correct, sir? Thank you very much. This time, I'm gonna open the public hearing for RZ oh seven twenty twenty one, Maple Grove. It is open now. Anybody wish to speak? Please come to the mic and speak. Okay, we'll do this one more time. Lisa, don't have to bang it three times. I'll have to bang it twice. Our last for the public hu, public hearing for RZ oh seven twenty twenty one, Maple Grove. Be open to the public at this time. Anybody wishes to speak, please step up to the mic at this time. Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. Any questions for staff, guys? I would like to hear then, Michael, at this time, I'm gonna ask for a motion for RZ oh seven twenty twenty one.
Mr. Chairman, where is rezoning request RZ zero seven twenty twenty one for Maple Grove? Appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map. And whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices warrants the approval of this request, I recommend that RZ zero seven twenty twenty one be forwarded to the board of supervisors with the recommendation of approval.
Second. I can second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We shall now move on to public hearing. SPEX fifteen twenty twenty one. This is Graham Properties. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your next public hearing is XPEX fifteen dash twenty twenty one, Graham Properties LLC owner, Everett Randall applicant. They're requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article seventeen, section thirteen, and Article four, section five point nineteen of the Caroline County zoning ordinance on tax map fifty-seven dash A dash twenty-seven, containing approximately twenty acres of land, uh, for this, for the project. Property is located at ten thousand two eighty-seven Page Road, approximately one mile east of Edge Hill Academy Road in the Port Royal District. Twenty thirty Comprehensive Plan designates this property as agricultural preservation, and its proposed use is a motocross training school. The applicant is requesting approval of special exception permit to operate a motocross training facility. The project is located on parcel twenty-seven dash A dash fifty-seven. The facility would ultimately offer multiple levels of classes. Be operated, uh, in a membership-only format, uh, with a few open ride dates. Facility would be open from ten to six, Monday through Friday, ten to five on Saturday, and, uh, closed on Sundays and, and certain holidays. The facility would have a, a classroom training, uh, area, uh, as, as well as provide weight, uh, training, office and restrooms for the proposed use. The applicant has previously conducted a noise study on the site, a copy of which is included in your staff report. Uh, there's one location on the property that was identified, uh, where noise levels potentially exceeded those, uh, specified in the RP zoning district. Uh, the study has provided options to address, uh, the noise mitigation at that location. The applicant has also provided, uh, a dust mitigation plan and an irrigation system, uh, for the proposed project. Should this application be approved, uh, this project would be the first motocross training facility, uh, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The, uh, application was submitted to all of our, uh, technical review committee members. Uh, the, um, uh, comments, uh, have been included in the staff report. We did receive, uh, uh, comments from the Virginia Department of Transportation, uh, after the staff report had been prepared. They have identified, uh, uh, several issues that need to be addressed, uh, at the site plan level if this project gets to that point. This is the first, uh, meeting on this and the, the public hearing. Uh, we have prepared, as we typically do, a general set of conditions for the commission to consider with the application. Uh, and based upon public comment, uh, and/or questions from the bo-, uh, commission, any conditions can be, uh, modified, uh, by the commission as we go forward. With that, I'll address any questions that you may have.
Mr. Fincham, it's, I don't know if I heard you wrong. It's a hundred and forty acres, correct?
It's a hundred and forty acres. I think twenty is actually devoted to the use itself.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Mr. Fincham, at one time was this, uh, previously a motorcycle training facility or dirt track or something?
Um, I think there was a, uh, uh, it was used, uh, uh, for, um, a, a dirt bike track. Um, and we did get some complaints previously that the applicant or the, the owner, uh, addressed those concerns and, and, and limited to, to his family use, which, which is allowed on, on an individual piece of property.
A- and the reason I ask, sir, is looking at an aerial view off of Google Earth, uh, you, you can definitely see the tracking.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I've been to a motoc- motocross race. Uh, they're noisy. But, uh, I, I was just wondering, the prior owner, he was able to mitigate the noise problem by limiting it to only his family? I- is that the way it was mitigated?
My recollection is that we had received a complaint about a motocross facility. A, a, a noise complaint isn't, his personal youth wouldn't necessarily mitigate a noise issue, okay? The, the, there are noise standards that are specific to the various zoning districts in the count- in, in the county. So if you violate that noise standard or that threshold, i- it's a violation, even though typically tied to, to the time of day. Okay? So during day, daytime hours, it may be less noisy or, or you may not hear it because of the background noise. Typically during the evenings, when, when other activity dies down, it is when we get a lot of our noise complaints. But I don't think the, it's not necessarily an individual use issue versus a commercial use issue. It's the threshold and it's a, it potentially a violation regardless.
Right, and, and that's where I was going because potentially without any restrictions, I believe, uh, maybe the land or, or the owner could, uh, sanction and put on races, uh, amongst, uh, the public. And certainly that is going to generate some traffic. It's going to generate some noise. Uh, and I was just wondering if there are any restrictions or any way we can put restrictions on, uh, an organized race? Because I've ridden motorcycles most all of my life and, and that's the one, especially dirt bikes. And that's the first thing you want to do when you learn how to handle it, is get out there and race and beat your buddy.
Yes, sir. Uh, I think we can discuss that as we go through this process. Certainly, w- we have a first set of draft conditions. If the commission feels that there needs to be strengthened or, or some conditions added, uh, to clarify use, uh, then certainly we can craft those for the commission's consideration.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I would just add, um, this one, Mr. Fincham was talking about the noise ordinance. Just to clarify for the commission, this special exception would not create an exception to the noise ordinance. That still applies. So even if you, you were to approve this, the noise ordinance still stands and it still applies to the property and has to be complied.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You have an applicant, gentlemen? Would you like to hear from the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. If the applicant is present, we would like him or her to make a presentation at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, um, members of the planning commission. I just want to give you a little background on myself before I go into, uh, my presentation. Uh, I've been in the sport of motocross for about twenty-five years and, um, I'm a former professional racer and I've been a coach for about fourteen years now. And during my time as a coach, I've done, uh, most of my training on the road. I've used, I've used racetracks, uh, public tracks, uh, people's private tracks, you name it, to, uh, run my business. And it's always been a dream of mine to have a facility where I could, you know, offer the resources for riders who want to up their game or, um, you know, kids with a dream who want to become a pro athlete. And, uh, even for new riders who, you know, someone gets a bike and they need to learn how to ride it, you know, there's, there's not many places to go right now. And, uh, motocross can be a really dangerous sport if you don't have the proper coaching. And it is considered to be one of the most physically demanding sports in the world. And it's, you know, it's interesting, if you look now in the mid-Atlantic area, there is not one place you can actually go to get, uh, formal motocross training and learn how to ride a dirt bike. Uh, there's nothing in Virginia. You'll find them in the south, but you're not going to find them, uh, around here. So, uh, I know this is a little different and, and a little unique, but, you know, I ask you to just have an open mind about it. There's a lot of people here who want this thing in this area. And, um, you know, it's, it's definitely a niche and a lot of people from the north, uh, are looking for something like this. There's, there's Caroline residents in here who want it. There's people from out of state. I even have some people who drove all the way from Ohio, uh, to be at this meeting. So, um, with that, I, I want to show you, uh, basically show you my presentation and, uh, all the details behind it. So the first, first slide I want to start with is, um, the name of the facility. And that is, uh, Ivy Hill MX Training Facility. The land that it used to sit on, or the land that it sits on now was called Ivy Hill Farm circa seventeen ninety, and I decided to keep that name. And this is what the logo would be. Uh, first I want to just clarify what motocross is. Uh, we're specifically talking about off-road motorcycles equipped with suspension that can handle, you know, rough terrains, harsh impacts, because there are, you know, there's jumps out there. It's high speed. And I'm sure you've seen these bikes on TV, you know, doing tricks. Um, sometimes you'll see, uh, cross-country, going through trails. That is not motocross. We're specifically racing on, in competition, we're racing an open track. Typically the track can be, you know, up to twenty-five feet wide. And in Ivy's hill, Ivy Hill's case, it can be up to a mile in length. And it, in competition, you can expect, you know, about three to twenty laps, uh, depending on your skill level and what class you're racing. Next is what the riders wear. And this is really what's required at all public tracks. It would be a DOT-approved helmet and goggles, uh, jersey, pants and gloves and boots. And, uh, a lot of riders do wear neck braces and chest protectors, but they're not required. Next, I want to just, I want to give you a feel for what I, well, if it works. Well, this is like a short video clip, but I'm not really sure to, uh, make it play. But this is just me talking to some kids here. I teach, uh, kids and adults of all ages and skill levels. And we go through, you know, all the body positions and techniques that you need to know for jumping, cornering, uh, the right equipment to have, uh, you name it. Next, this is the, um, this is Ivy Hill as it sits right now. It's been this way for about four and a half years, excluding a couple of changes I made to the track. Actually made it a little smaller. Um, and the track to the left, the bigger one, would be considered your main more advanced tracks, advanced, uh, obstacles and conditions. And then you'd have your smaller track to the right there, which would be your kids' track or beginner's track. And then, uh, part of my application, I'm requesting a change, and that would be the expansion of that parking lot there, where the big square is. And then the small square would feature a, a shop. This would be the top view of that change, expansion of the parking lot and a shop. Um, I have requested by the planning department that I could use gravel for these, uh, roadways just due to the nature of the business and the fact that I will have machines that I'll need to maintenance the property. It's just, uh, rendering what the shop might look like. Inside the shop, you'd have a gym, because physical fitness is an important aspect of motocross training. Uh, on the right, you'd see the shop where we would have the ability to fix a bike if a student, uh, you know, had a, a breakdown or something like that. We could repair it and then get back out there on the track. Uh, this is me, um, teaching it. I always have a classroom setting when I do classes. Typically it's, it's under a tent, so, uh, and this one I'm probably freezing. But it's, you know, a shop would give us the ability to get out of the, the, you know, harsh weather or whatever at that time. And then, uh, I usually, we play back video that we take of the students and then they can see what they're doing wrong and fix that when we go back out to the track. Next, I want to go over the general operations of this business. Uh, first would be private training. And, uh, for the rest of the slides, I'm just going to say that, uh, these operations would go between ten AM to six PM during the week. And on a Saturday, at, it would end at five PM, so one hour earlier. Uh, private training could be anywhere from two to three hours and it must be scheduled with me directly for, as an appointment. Group training, uh, can last up to five hours. And, uh, riders would be, would need to pre-enroll online. And, uh, usually there's a break every hour and a longer break for lunchtime. And last, we would have open practice, which would fall on a Saturday. And this would be open to the public and students alike, where, uh, they could come out and, you know, ride the track without coaching involved. This allows them to, uh, have some, you know, a relaxing day of practice. They can work on their weaknesses, uh, and just have a fun day out there with their friends. Neighbors and mitigation. So, uh, a point I'd like to make again is that I have been here for four and a half years. Myself and my friends have actively been riding here. And I have never, uh, referring to the noise complaints, I have never received any noise complaint for the actual riding. Um, I, these areas in green, I've actually talked to these neighbors in person and I've received a written approval from these neighbors. Uh, any of the ones that are not green, I just did not receive a response. But I did go to each neighbor personally to talk to them. And some of them, uh, don't have a residence there, so I wasn't able to talk to anybody personally. Uh, noise, so I, I did have a noise study done. It was an extensive noise study. And we used the biggest, loudest bikes on the market with two pro riders out there to make sure the RPMs were high and to get the worst-case scenario. And, uh, for the planning department, I, they found that my noise readings were acceptable, other than one location that they had requested me to address. And I'm going to do that right now. So this turn, as you can see, it's pretty close to the, uh, property line there. And when the bike was exiting the turn, that green arrow is, and the exhaust was pointed near that meter, is when it peaked, at sixty-five above the noise ordinance of sixty, if I were to get approved, uh, for a special use permit. And my simple solution to this would be completely take out that turn. And, and I had a feeling that maybe this might happen because it is so close to that property line. The simple fix for this would be to completely, uh, move the track. And this is going to cut down on noise three different ways. One, it would move the track back two hundred feet more. And two, this now turns into a deceleration area where, um, you know, it, the riders will be breaking through there and the noise will be cut down next to nothing. And, uh, three, now the exhaust is pointed to the top left of this map. This, just to shine a little confidence on the, on any noise concerns, this was taken when this noise study was done. And when I, when I, uh, had first created this track, before I moved in, this whole property was timbered. So the noise was carrying a lot easier. This was taken three years ago, uh, with a drone and I took the same exact photo on Monday just to show you what the difference is every single year. So now the trees are twice as tall and this is the entire property. I get at least a, a foot and a half of growth and additional buffer every year, um, at this property. Dust, I just want to address the dust with this picture. This is what the track would look like before, every single morning before a bike would hit it. Our, you know, the intention here for this training facility is to mimic race-like conditions. And that means bumps, uh, ruts and grooves in the track. And that doesn't form unless the dirt is wet. So I would be putting a, a, an irrigation system in the ground and that would keep the, the track wet at all times. And, um, you know, it, it doesn't do any good for my business as well if riders come out and they have to ride on dry dirt. It's not favorable in this market or the industry. And, uh, so it's in my best interest as a business owner to make sure that the dirt is always wet. Just want to finish up with this last slide. This shows where all the facilities right now on the East Coast, uh, are. Those red, uh, stars. And there's nothing above those stars right now as far as a legitimate training facility for all ages and skill levels. And that blue star would be potentially where Ivy Hill would be in a convenient location right off of ninety-five. So I just want to end here. As a, a business owner and a resident, you know, I'm, I'm committed to accommodating my neighbors the best that I can to make sure that I'm, you know, not disturbing anybody. And, um, you know, I want this facility to be one of the best in the nation and something that the county will be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions that the applicant, while he's here? Do you have any questions you want to ask the applicant?
Mr. Everett, what, what, uh, CC engines are you going to be running, uh, on your equipment?
So it, it could be anywhere from fifty CCs to four fifty CCs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will, will they have mufflers? Will, will they have mufflers or?
Well, they all, you know, everybody's using, some of them use OEM, the stock ones. Some of them are using aftermarket. And, you know, everybody's trying to get that edge in competition. So as far as a muffler that will quiet the bike, nobody's really actively doing that, but it would be, you know, it would be within my efforts to make sure that they're falling within those noise decibel limits.
Okay, and that same would apply if someone were to bring their own bike, is that correct?
Yeah, as far as the business goes, everybody would need to bring their own equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And, and you say you already own the property, correct?
Yes, correct.
What age groups do you, looking at?
Age groups?
Yes.
It can start as, well, I guess it just depends on how early a child will start riding a bicycle. Some of them get started really early. I've even trained some, probably a three-year-old on, on training wheels. They'll put training wheels on a little 50. And so it starts really young. And there's some, there's a lot of riders who are, who keep racing right now, and they're 70 years old.
Are you the only instructor? Are you the only instructor? Are you going to have?
I, I'm the only instructor at this time, yes. Yes. Sorry?
Those bikes, now there's a baffle that goes in there if you're taking it out. It's quite noisy. Are you going to require them to keep the baffles in there or?
Well, usually when, we can tell if a, an exhaust has been, it hasn't been maintained. It'll usually sound like really raspy, and it's, it'll pierce the ears. So, but it's not been, within my experience, that that happens, because the market that I'm in, they're all racers, and they usually have updated equipment where we'd never, I've never had to deal with that.
Now, you were talking about the second track, which was to the left. That was the advanced track.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The young kids on the right use that one to be trained. Now, how old are they before they go over there to that track?
It would depend on their skill level, because the one, the small one is flat. And so they don't have to deal with technical conditions like bumps or, you know, deep ruts that they have to ride through. And so, once they reach a certain skill level, then they would be ready to go to the bigger track, which would be intended to mimic like a race-like conditions. And, and that starts to get a little more technical, then they're ready at that point.
Are they going to be jumping?
Yes, sir.
Now, does adults use that track?
The beginner track?
No.
The, oh, the big track?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. They would use that track.
So when you set that up for the younger people, is there any changes in the, the, the roadways? Is it regraded for the younger people to use? Because I know the adults can tear our ground up some kind of terrible. But the younger people would be in there, wouldn't be as bad. But would they do, grade that ground so that they wouldn't get hurt? That's, that's what I'm worried about it being hurt.
Absolutely. And that's part of it. I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm in this industry for safety, you know, motocross safety. And everything is organized to where, if there's a 50 class with a lot of little kids, when that class is done, a machine goes out there and regrades the track for whatever, you know, level we have to train. So, for example, if we have 50s, small kids on little bikes, the track would be flat. We would just run a blade around the track, so it's flat dirt. And then if we have more of an experienced class, that dirt would be actually turned up, and those big bikes would start to make grooves and, and bumps.
Okay. And the size, bikes, what size?
So we'd have 50s, 65s, 85s. It can, you know, 125s, 250, 450.
Okay.
So I have a question, because a couple of months ago, we, we just had a bunch of citizens from your area come in from the Page Road area and asked that that area remain rule, very rural and very quiet. Where they didn't want a solar farm in that area. They didn't want businesses in that area. It's, and it's a major business. So would you be open to us coming out and viewing the property?
Absolutely.
Okay.
No problem.
Mr. Everett, do you contemplate having any organized races?
Not at all. I have no intentions of running races. I'm, I, it looks and sounds way too stressful for me to ever want to do that. And I've been, I've been in this, in the business of training for 14 years. So this has always been something I've wanted to do. My, my passion is in the training.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Are you traveling now and training people?
Not as much now. I probably stopped traveling as much two years ago. But I was traveling all through, all through the East Coast to do it.
Scott? How many entrances to your facility are there? I'm looking at the overview, and it looks like there's one main. Is, is there a secondary entrance?
There's, there's an entrance there that goes directly to the house. And then there's a gravel road, basically, that you can go through a gate, and that leads right to the track.
Is that, that's all off of the Page Road?
Yes.
And so the gate, is that something that is locked or is, and is that on your property?
It's locked, yeah. It's on the property, but it's, it's locked, yeah.
And then, so I noticed in one of the slides, it looked like there was some students, and you had some water, a waterway. So were they traveling through the waterway? And was that a picture located on the property or was that somewhere else?
Was it on the aerial? You saw it on the aerial?
It was, it looked like you had a video up, and it looked like you were talking about where they, you know, how they would do this appropriately.
Yeah, that was, there was no water in that. That was actually supposed to be a video clip, but I couldn't get it to play. But.
I think it was later in the presentation.
Okay.
Could you pull the presentation back up, possibly? Right here, that slide?
Here.
So in the image, in the, it looks like on the screen or laptop or, you know, your computer screen, is that an image on your property or is that somewhere else?
No, I, I know exactly what footage that is, actually. That's, that's just a clip from Florida.
Okay.
And I'm, and I'm showing the class what they should be doing in a certain section.
Okay.
Just a demonstration.
So they wouldn't be going through any streams on the property?
No, no, no.
Okay. And then expected capacity, do you have capacity limits that you're anticipating?
So for the, any, anything training-related would be enrollment-based. So I have full control over anything training-related. And on the upper end, we would, I guess we would refer to the camp, like a, a group training. And those normally cap at 20. I don't even do classes of 20. Usually, they're at 10, because it can get overwhelming. So the max would be 20 for a group training. Now, for an open practice day, that could range anywhere from 20 to 80. I do have some friends that own public tracks, and that can range from 20 to 80 riders, the latter being in peak season like springtime.
And so when you have an open day, how would you manage that from a safety perspective? You know, because it sounds like you're, it, it's open to the public. You could have a wide variety of, of riders, some with maybe limited experience, some very experienced, differing skill and age levels. It, it, how does that work? If you could kind of explain that?
So once, once it gets to a point to, if there's over 20 riders, then practice would be split up into, say, 20-minute sessions, where the practices would be, be split up between big bikes would be your 250s, 450s and 125s. And then you'd have your, basically, your, probably your mid-class, where you have, they're kids, but they're on 85s, 65s, they're, you know, probably this tall. And then you'd have your 50s. So about, you'd have three classes that you're splitting up throughout the day in 20-minute sessions to keep everybody safe.
Okay. So is there a ratio of instructor to students? That you, it sounds like you kind of set a limit at 20, is that?
One to 10.
One to 10?
Yeah.
Okay. So would that be something that we would consider as, you know, potential condition? Or could that be a suggested condition that we, you know, ask of the applicant? That it, that that number remain a one to 10 ratio?
Yes, you could do that. We may want to look at another way of writing it, because from a staff perspective, we're not going to be out there on a Saturday ensuring that that ratio is met. So there may, maybe another way to get at what you're looking at without it, writing it as a condition that, you know, is difficult to enforce.
Right. And I would expect, yeah, I mean, it definitely sounds like, you know, one of your priorities is safety of, you know, anyone who comes out there. Obviously, you don't want hurt riders and whatnot. So, you know, setting limits that you feel comfortable with, being able to maintain those safety standards, obviously is something that I'm sure you would want. And, you know, likely, maybe something that you could, you know, it, it, maybe expand more on in your, as you develop your, your program here.
I would, I would request that it wouldn't be for, I guess, for that limit. I wouldn't want to limit myself from, you know, growth. So I would ask for, so maybe if there's another trainer, it would be 20 at that point.
Right.
Which would make sense, yes.
Right. And that's what, you know, my line of thinking was, if you feel comfortable, you know, coaching 10 students, obviously, you could have additional training staff. You know, I know you've got access to, you know, multiple tracks, and you likely could even separate your, your one large track into different sections as well.
Sure.
So, yeah, I think there's, you know, opportunities for you to expand with that. And it looked like in the package, there was a membership process. Is that an application process or if you could speak to that?
So for a, for a group training, usually a class would be promoted online through social media, anything like that. And usually, a rider would need to sign up through the website. They pre-enroll, and they'd be sent all the instructions, what they need to bring to class, the equipment they're expected to have, the safety gear that they're expected to have. And when they get to the site, then they would sign a waiver, and they basically would be enrolled when they showed up.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I think the capacity is, is something we'll probably need to work with, because it's a major business in a rural preservation area. I mean, if it's approved. And, and also, I think VDOT had, was going to send us some more comments, correct? On the noise. I am a little bit concerned about 6:00 PM in the winter, you know, staying, you know, it gets dark at 5:00 o'clock in the winter. Staying open that late in the winter.
It, it would, it would, sorry, it would close, it would close before dark. Yeah, that was just a general time that was put in.
Yeah, but we would need that specified, and we would need the holidays specified. I think Mr. Finch was going to mention something about VDOT's concerns or no?
Yes, VDOT sent their comments. Really, they're all site plan issues, site distance. Make sure the entrance be the minimum curve radius. Couple of other standards. So we have that list, we'll give it to you for the next meeting.
Okay, I was thinking I didn't have the list, yeah.
It's really, they're site plan issues.
Okay. Now, this does not create any additional jobs for the county, correct? Mr. Everett, did I get it right?
Yes. It, it would create some jobs, yes, for, we would need a mechanic for the shop reasons if, if a bike were to break down.
Full-time, do you think or no?
It's possible when we get to that point. That would be my intention, for sure. And a, a crew to help with track maintenance. You know, there's a, there's definitely a couple of people needed for that. And, you know, maintenance-ing the track, taking care of the equipment if it breaks down. It's a fitness trainer. So there are definitely some specialties needed for this facility to offer all aspects. There would be fitness training, you know, mechanic, nutritional consulting, and, you know, track maintenance, like I said.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I think it's time to open the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing for SPEX 15-2021. Anyone wishes to speak? Step forward to the microphone, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Robert Six. I live at 10287 Page Road, which is about 200 yards away from the track. Everybody's concerned about noise. After he starts riding, I don't even pay attention to it. It's like you're never cutting your, cutting the grass. You know, they start the lawnmower up, you hear it for a few minutes, and then it's like, like, you know, the background noise. So I don't see where the noise is going to be an issue. I think it would be really good. I mean, it's going to give kids something to do, you know, keep them out of trouble. You know, it's going to create jobs. And, you know, this, he's really passionate about the training part, and that's what he's, he's named him to do. And I hope you let him do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, sir. My name is Araba Salo. I live on 13226 Billborough Road in Wilford, Virginia, approximately seven, eight minutes from there. I think this sport generates really strong young kids. I think that, you know, we definitely support this for the youth of the kids. Motocross has become huge in the last three, four years. There's a lot of kids that are using it the wrong way, and we can provide a spot for them to learn the proper way. So I'm definitely for this project.
If you want a family-oriented sport, we've done many sports between soccer, T-ball, softball. And this has been by far the biggest family sport that we have ever been a part of. So if you're looking for something family-oriented, this is definitely a sport to go towards. I think it would definitely be an asset to the county.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
And, and excuse me, where were those two residents from? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Caroline County? Okay, two, okay.
Hi, my name's Trey Yow. I actually live in Maryland, Lenartown, to be exact. And I've known Randall for quite a long time. He's a fixture in the motocross community. And I'm here to speak for his character. He's a really good stand-up guy. And he cares about his students, and he, he very passionate about what he does. I just wanted to assure you guys that if, if this proceeds forward, it'll be an amazing facility. And as you can see by the turnout, there's a lot of support for this project here. We need something like this where beginners can come, learn the sport safely without having to go to a racetrack and kind of throw themselves to the wolves and stuff. So I think it's a very important thing. It's a good sport. These people are my family. We all get along great. I just think it'd be a very good addition to your county, and I appreciate your all's time. And he's. I just think it'd be a very good addition to your county and uh I appreciate your all's time and he's really good guy. He knows what he's doing. He's a stand-up, stand-up guy. So I'm sure he'll do whatever it takes to make this thing right. So something you all will be proud of. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Mike Bridges. I live in uh Falkirk County. I represent family all-pro riders of Prince William County. And years ago, twenty years ago, we started this club with the same same issue that I think in twenty years you're gonna have. We ran out of space, uh really farmland to ride. So we had to come up with a, you know, a plan to work with the county where we could lease through a S U P process. The property to uh have to ride for our kids to enjoy. Over the years, as we all aged, the properties became gated and fenced. And you just couldn't ride through there like you used to because they actually became neighborhood. I heard it mentioned a couple of times that you want uh, sorry, you want the land preserved and kept as open space. This would lock, lock up a hundred and forty acres for you. One of the things we worked with Prince William County with by identifying property in the county uh for us. We were able to one, lock some space up for a number of years, about fifteen years. Unfortunately, at that point, we did lose the lease and it was developed. Right now, we're actually working with the county on a county park that we've leased uh strictly for riding, no competition, and we're not holding training. Uh, as Randall does, but I will say over the years, he has trained and worked with our kids with great success. So we can attest to what uh what he's rep or what he's proposing. It works. Our kids have enjoyed the sport. They've excelled and he's proven that his business model and business plan works. Uh, with that, we also found that by working with the county, we were able to stop a lot of the illegal riding, uh trespassing. Sometimes riding on the road, kids actually had a safe and supervised place to participate in the sport. I think you're gonna find the same thing as the, as time moves forward and you start losing your, you know, open farmland. Kids are kind of left with no choice, you know? People that that are buying these, the houses and the developments frown upon riding through their, you know, their yards. Earlier, you know, back in the day, you could ride through farm, farmland and the farmers really didn't care. They'd wave at you. Now you ride through somebody's neighborhood, they chase you. But having said that, I've known Randall for years. I've seen him grow up in the sport, set goals, blood, sweat and tears to achieve his goals. And he's proven himself to to be a person that that will persevere. I've also watched him uh with this business over the years, go through diff-
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Evans. I'm from Ocean City, Maryland, tower where my son is with me and he lives here in Caroline County as well. Um, my son started dirt bike riding at the age of eight. He is now seventeen. When I first purchased a dirt bike for him, I had no idea what I was doing, but I was led to a track at B M P through mama. There are many, many racetracks here that uh many series to race upon and Randall was the first trainer that um I met. So I immediately got my son lessons and within three, to teach him safety because I didn't want to set him out on a motor vehicle and not be safe. And the first three years of him teaching my son, he actually became the Virginia State Champion of his class. Uh, he still races today, many different series, but to hear, to have mama, M D R A, S X C S, U S Ga- uh, U S Sprint Enduro. There are so many series that race in this northeast area, up and down from Pennsylvania to south of the border. To have a training facility for kids to come and learn um is really an amazing thing because there's not a lot of places to go except YouTube or your friends at some other family farm. So I think he he's done an amazing job with my son. Lot of responsibility, lot of respect, lot of trust for the bike safety, number one priority.
Mr. Chairman, Council, thank you very much for hearing all of us here uh this evening. My name is David Nicholas and I'm from Smithfield, Virginia. I've been an active motorcycle rider and and racer for about forty-five years, a member of the American Motorcyclist Association. A qualified referee for organized events and served as the Vice President of the Elizabeth City Motocross Club in Elizabeth City, North Carolina. For for about six years until two years ago and now I'm s- still a a standing member of of that club. I've spent a lot of time um in the same uh arena as uh as Randall Everett and watched him conduct schools. I participated in a couple of training sessions uh as a, as a senior. He had training sessions for veteran riders. And um a half dozen of us went to Ivy Hill and and rode there with him a little bit um uh one time before. He is very competent and organized. You can see from his presentation what kind of a guy he is. He runs his operation the same way and and you can also see that he wants to respect uh the neighbors and and the law. Uh, this committee uh would highly recommend that you approve his his uh request and um am sure that he'll comply with any, anything that the public uh deems necessary to to reach his goals and and have an amicable relationship with with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, good evening, Chairman and Board. My name is Kyle Dawson. I live at four zero seven one Rattletrap Road. I have my son with me who goes to the Carmel School. And um, you know, as I mentioned, you know, motocross is a very family-oriented sport. You know, obviously uh schools don't offer uh training or any sort of club or anything like this uh for their school. So I would think it'd be important uh for the county to consider something like this to uh be able to um offer an expansion of of activities. Family oriented at that for uh children and families of this community and I think it would be a great addition um to the county. So, thank you.
Hi, I am uh Charles Beveridge and here with my older brother Jacob Beveridge and uh we actually come from Cleveland, Ohio. Uh, we just wanted to come down here and show our appreciation for Randall and what he's done and uh made us the uh people that we are happy to be. And uh we've.
I'm twenty-one years old. I've been with a um a handful of different trainers and he has definitely been by far my favorite trainer that I've ever been with. The tools that he uses for su- are complete success. Um, I've been extremely happy with my growth in riding. I'm an A rider and it's just, he's helped me out tremendously and I've improved and I just couldn't imagine on how many other people he could actually help do that with. And it's fantastic on what he's doing and I really hope it's, it works and keeps doing what he's doing.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Charlie Laws. I actually live in King George County, but I will be speaking on behalf of Veterans MX Foundation. As for some of you that don't know, Veterans MX Foundation is a nonprofit organization that is based around veterans, active and non uh active military, law enforcements and first responders. Started in two thousand seventeen with only sixty members and now we are up to over nine hundred members and we are nationwide. So on a deeper level, what we basically are about is we provide a therapeutical, therapeutic environment that creates opportunities for mental, physical and personal development where traditional veteran services may fall short. With that being said, this foundation empowers veterans struggling with the physical and mental scars of service to leverage the benefit of motocross while tapping into thrill-seeking personalities that they basically get when they're overseas. So they come over, motocross really kind of helps them out, helps them breathe, helps them not basically take all of the medicine that they kind of push on them. So it'd be really awesome to have a training facility here where somebody like Randall would be able to work with them one-on-one, help them out, help them relearn, get their mind off the stuff that they've been going through. And right now, after ending the twenty-year war, I think that would be really helpful. So thank you, guys.
Hi, my name is James Brown. I'm from Prince William County, Virginia. I've known Randall for the majority of my life and I've raced motocross the majority of my life. The one thing I want to focus on today is the safety aspect of this facility. So as we all know, motocross is a dangerous sport and we wear protective gear to uh reduce the damage done if we crash. Ivy Hill will reduce the risk of damage um through the techniques that Randall teaches on how to avoid crashing, how to react, how you know, proper form in all facets of racing, riding, just in general. Um, to that, he's doing the the community a sincere service by keeping everyone much safer at his facility. To that point, his amenities at the facility will promote health as well. So as you've seen by the two riders from Ohio, Randall Everett himself, they're in fantastic shape. To race motocross, you need to be that way, but training, the the long-term health for motocross rolls off into real-world health. I haven't raced formally in probably ten years, but every time I go riding or between riding, I'm at the gym, I'm exercising so I can ride. So it is something that kind of sticks with you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Hodge. I reside at one two three eight three South River Road in Woodford. And I'm just here to um bring up some objective questions about this project. One is noise, um because I have a neighbor that lives about a mile from me that has a child with an ATV. And when he drives that in the woods on his property, it sounds like it's in right in my backyard. Um, also, the Dominion Raceway is about ten miles as the crow flies from my home. And on Saturday nights when they have the race, I can hear it from my home. Um, this property is about four and a half miles from my house and I'm just worried about the noise, especially um like on Saturday nights when they have the free race. Um, also traffic concern. Um, the gentleman stated that there might be eighty um riders coming on Saturdays for the free rides. Um, which would probably bring about forty cars um coming down Page Road. I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm also concerned about people coming in from out of this area. And also um bringing commercial um business to Page Road, which is agricultural preservation. And also I have a question about the water source for the um irrigation system. And I don't know, you know, where are the waters coming from, a deep well or something, if that's been addressed. And um my other thing is um safety concern for the children riding and you know, do the um do the fire and rescue have anything to do, any say in this about kids getting hurt? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
My name's Eric K. I'm from Hollywood, Maryland. I've been racing professional motocross now since two thousand and nine. Again, I'm thirty-five years old, so I was one of the youngsters in the back for when I first started riding. I've been all over this country. Unfortunately, unfortunately, it's been a blessing. Um, I've also actually been at several of those training facilities you saw lower on that map. I've lived at a few, I've visited a few, so I know what they entail. I can't speak on behalf of everybody in here, but I can speak on behalf of Randall and a lot of the other pro riders. And there's one or two other in here that Nick should get up and speak as well. However, um these motorcycles aren't just your regular trail bikes. We're not out there on old equipment. We're on really expensive, really high-end equipment that is built to to race. It's built to train. It's built to keep us safe. Um, I know, for example, I have suspension on the motorcycle that costs more than my motorcycle just to keep me safe and allow me to do what I need to do to succeed. I would probably go on the edge to say about ninety percent of the parents for these children are business owners. So they're going to be under the impression of bringing business to Caroline County. The economic growth always grows in these areas. Specifically in Chesterfield, South Carolina, there's a training facility called Club MX. They went from a very small facility, just like Randall, and has grown massively into race teams and different areas that was the goal of that owner. However, what they did for that county, what they did for that area was brought in massive growth to an extent that allowed new jobs. It did not bring racing in because they were so hyper-focused on the training. It also, it gave the community a way to feel as a part of something local that was being taken nationwide. So that's, it's, it's a really good way to bring in outside funding, outside opinions, outside workers and get the local community involved with something like this. So you know, going forward, keep in mind, we are very, our mindsets are very focused on training and taking the races to the tracks that, you know, are sanctioned to race. We are very focused on the equipment being up to date. I could almost guarantee you not one rider in there is gonna be a bike older than a year or two old. And some of those other facilities do require certain standards on their equipment, as I'm sure Randall's gonna do as well. So please keep it in mind, give him the opportunity to, you know, bring in outside funding and riders. So, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this application? Please step forward at this time.
Members of the commission, my name is James Street. I live at one zero three nine nine Page Road, where I have lived for thirty-eight years. For sixteen of those years, I served on the planning commission, had the pleasure of serving with Leon Smith when he was first appointed to the commission. And I'm glad to see he's still up there. I do have several concerns. I don't for a second doubt Mr. Everett's qualifications or character. He sent a very nice letter to everyone in the neighborhood. Uh, I'd like to just quote a couple of things from the, that letter. Uh, he says that for the last four years, my friends and I have been using the motocross track to ride on and I hope I haven't disturbed you in any way. He then goes on to say that there will never be racing on the property. I'm certainly very glad to hear that. I'd like to point out that the tracks that are in existence now were built without the proper environmental permits. My understanding is those permits have now been obtained, but because the tracks were built prior to getting the permits, it causes me to have concern about what kind of compliance you'll get with any conditions you put in place. Regarding the noise, when you look at his, the noise study and the noise level, I would ask you, consider the fact that going over a certain decibel level is a violation, but consider the ambient noise that is already there now and what type of increase the increase will be resulting from the use of the the motocross bikes. Whereas farm equipment, logging equipment produce a general constant noise and it does become white noise very quickly. These bikes, as you would expect, accelerate, decelerate, different motor sizes have different pitches. It's a constant change and at least for me, living where I do, it is difficult to adjust to it as just being white noise. I would also ask that you consider, if you do a site visit, that you go out and ride the roads, not just Page Road, but the other roads customers would be using to get to this site. In the spring- In the springtime, when this is expected to have its highest juice, Page Road fills up with bicycle riders. It is a designated bicycle route. You will see packs of 15 to 20 bicycle riders on that road. Bringing more strangers on that road at a time when crops are in full growth is nothing but a hazard. I would ask you to consider that. I would also ask you to consider that there will likely be an increase in demand for fire and rescue services. When the ball field went in below Lady Smith, they assured us that there would be no increase. My wife runs with the Lady Smith squad and when the park is in full use, it is a rare weekend that someone doesn't have to call the squad for a parent's fear of concussion, bruises, broken bones. Hi, you add motorized vehicles to youth and there's just a chance for injury. I also have a concern about the bicycle repair shop, the motocross repair shop. My concern is that that forum-
The time, the time's expired, sir.
I'm an ISE. Does he want it back?
Hello, my name's Gavin Clark. I'm from Vaucier County, Virginia. I'm actually a business owner in Ashburn, Virginia. I actually run a generator company, so I deal with noises a lot with different counties, Arlington and Alexandria. Is your decibel level, is your audience here of 65 decibel? Do you know it?
I think it's 65.
65, okay. That's usually what generators run at. I would say that more than likely you have a lot of generators probably closer to the property line running at that and, you know, portables as well. If you approve, you know, the, the track to be ridden in certain areas and they're coming in at certain levels, I would think Mr. Everett would keep them in that area. I've been riding at tracks for the past 15 years and you're usually riding in a certain area. Not usually run off to the side. And I've never sat in a traffic jam to a practice day. You know, so on Sundays, Saturdays, you know, or I guess on Saturdays only, you'll really never see it. People come, you know, between 10 and 12 and be like five or six at a time. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Alex Thacker. I'm from King George, Virginia. I just wanted to get up and speak real quick on this sport of motocross. It, I raced motocross when I was young, thankfully so. It probably kept me out of a lot of trouble. My two boys, as you see behind me, they race motocross and they're very passionate about it. It's a huge, huge sport for family, families to come together on the weekends and to be together and to make sure that your kids aren't in trouble. I've never personally met Mr. Everett, but I've heard a lot about him. I know he definitely has the credentials that you guys need and I'd imagine that he will definitely work with the county and the community to make whatever happened, whatever needs to happen, happen. Unfortunately, it's a dying sport. There's not many places to ride anymore. And I think this area could definitely, definitely use a facility like he has going on or has planned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak on this application?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Hamilton. I'm also from King George County. My son and his friend there came and they've been sitting through, loving that they're getting to see how government works and everything. Mr. Everett has been training them for the last two, almost three years now. They started out on the little bikes. They're up on the 65s. The big thing that I, I've seen out of the boys is the confidence that they gain, the respect they gain for, for the machine, the, the respect for people and listening to Mr. Everett and how he explains everything. There, there's, there's no other sport that I've been involved in throughout my life that, that everyone's mentioned it, that the family gets together, they help each other. I, I've seen people take wheels off their bike to give it to someone else so that they can, their son could race and things like that. In the, during the training, my, my son and his friend was actually in the picture, one of the pictures, the video that didn't work, that was them getting trained. That training, I've never, the very first thing they did, Mr. Everett had him set the bike up on the stand, adjust everything correctly, make sure they're, they could reach all the controls correctly. They adjust, he made sure the chains were adjusted, the brakes were adjusted correctly, made sure the bike was completely safe before they even started the bike. So, and he taught him a lot about how that felt. He had him stand up on the bike and get the feel for the bike before they even went out on the track. Then the way he would run them through the training, going, he would have them go through a, a little section. He'd film it, he'd stop them, show them how they were doing it, show them that they weren't covering controls correctly or something, just to make sure that they were doing things correctly before they went to the next more advanced step. So, the other thing for the economic impact, like they say, it's physical demanding, physically demanding, even for me sitting there watching my son race or, or practice. As soon as we're done, we're hungry. We, we go to your old local restaurants, we eat. My truck, my motorcycles, they need gas. We stop and fill up. We, we definitely use the local businesses when we come down and do it. So please take all that into account and give, give our kids a place to keep continuing to learn and ride and gain that confidence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Nicholas Hayes. I'm from Chesterfield, Virginia. I have raced with Mr. Everett for 14 years, 14 years or so. One thing, and I, we both have raced professionally, and one thing you will learn with us is about technique, safety. Most people you see injured on motorcycle are not trained. They don't have the proper training. What Randall's teaching, what I have taught in the past as well, is safety. I mean, come, speed comes later on. You want to teach technique, how to ride the bike properly and how to be fundamentally sound on the motorcycle. And he also teaches all your safety stuff. You don't, when someone goes on the track, they don't let someone go out there with like their helmet unstrapped. It's always going to be strapped. That's what you teach. You want to teach fundamentals, so that's what they're always going to be about later on, is safety. Always have your boots on. And the next thing is people worry about the sound. But the pro-level racing and at local AMA races now, they don't allow bikes just to be obnoxiously loud. No one wants to ride one that way. It just, it doesn't perform as well. And we have sound tests, so they make it, the professional test, sound tests. And when a lot of people mimic the pros, they want to mimic what their bike sound like. So they don't want to have the loud, obnoxious motorcycle out there. They want to have one that's quiet and does it. And that's what AMA, MX Sports, who runs all the pro and the local amateur nationals, well, nation, YAMN, amateur nationals, they're all about that too. And Randall, I foresee, he would be the same way. He's going to want people to abide by that. And you got to look down the road. 10 years from now, I mean, y'all are talking about solar panels. Bikes are going electric too. You might not even know we're there in 10 years. It might be all electric by that point. You just don't know what to foresee. So if anybody's complaining about electric, I don't, I'm, 10 years from now, that might not even be a problem. The sound. And then to harp on what the previous person said about the local economics, when people come to town, they spend a lot at the gas station. We burn the fuel. We go to the restaurants. We, like I said, the grocery stores, auto stores. There's a lot of good local economics that's from it and I think it'll be awesome for y'all's county.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Bordeaux and I'm from Spotsylvania County. And I don't have a motorcycle. I don't like motorcycles. I don't like hearing Harleys either. They make a lot of noise, but they're all over the roads. But I do have two daughters and they have children that actively race, have actively trained with Randall. And I've never met Randall before, but I liked what you said. But both of my grandchildren went to the Reddylens this year, which is a national motocross event, and he helped sponsor them. I fully support track. I used to have one on my property and we did, got away with it. And I think Randall, actually years ago, you came to my place and asked about it. And my neighbor said, no, let's not do it. So he didn't. So he went and got his own place with Ivy Hill, which I've heard nothing but great things about. So I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rich Hutchins. I'm from Ocean City, Maryland. I've raced for 47 years now. I'm 55 years old, so you can tell how young I started. My parents were the original parents who started the Mid-Atlantic Motocross Association, MAMA, which you've heard about. Past 10 years, I've been on the same board as they were when they first started it. Made it all the way to vice president of MAMA. And when Randall bought this property four years ago and built this track there, I actually approached him three years ago from the organization about holding a race on his property. And before it even got anywhere, he shut me down. Like, no, absolutely not. That's not what I want. I did pursue, try to pursue him beyond that to, for Mama to have another track, because we're running out of tracks. There's no places for us to ride. So I did pursue him for a little while on purchasing, or not purchasing, but helping him even build the track with the organization in mind to race there. And that's not his intention. He shut it down. It's not what he wants. So I just wanted to make sure that the board knows that that's not what he's, his intentions are, is to hold a race there. It is to train. Again, like I said, I've been involved in, since I was eight years old in this sport. And it's probably saved me from getting in a lot of trouble myself, growing up through the years. It's kept me focused. I mean, I was an early pro rider back in the 80s, so I know what it's also like to, to train and stay in fit and become a pro rider. So, do I think it's great for this county? Yes, I do. I, I think it's probably one of the best things you could probably do and, and help our, our sport expand, like you said, for training. And as far as that incidences go, I mean, being in a sport of, of racing constantly, it's not like we have medical issues all the time. I mean, it's not. I mean, you're, we're talking about eight, 900 riders this past year with Mama that have raced. That's a lot of riders on a track. And for an ambulance maybe to leave once all weekend, that's a lot of safe riders. I mean, it's, so for what he's trying to do on the scale that he's trying to do, I don't think, not saying nobody's going to get hurt. I mean, you could get hurt stepping off a curve. It's, it, you know, it kind of is what it is. I mean, these, these riders, they know what they're, they're doing before they even get on a bike anyway. They know their, their odds, their chances, you know, whether they're going to get hurt or not. I mean, like I said, I've done this for, as long as I've done it. I mean, have I been hurt? Yes, I have, but I, I still do it at 55. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stefan Spagina. I live in Spotsylvania County, formerly lived at Lake Caroline. I'm 32 years old. I've been racing motocross since I was five. My daughter is six. She rides. She doesn't race yet, but she loves the sport. And, you know, what I want to bring up is that you all aren't taking a look at just a track. You're, you're looking at a community. You're looking at a, like a brotherhood, a community of people, right? I was married in 2013 and of my seven groomsmen, six of them I met at a motocross track. I've learned more lessons at the motocross track than I've ever, maybe not more, but as many as I've learned in school. I've learned mechanics. I've learned humility. I've learned defeat and how to deal with it continually, because I'm not as good as half the people in this room, actually. But you learn a lot. In the sport, in the state of Virginia, somebody who grew up in Western Pennsylvania where it is still flourishing, i- it's dwindling, right? Where I have to go, where a lot of these people have to go to go to a motocross track is Hedgesville, West Virginia, Mechanicsville, Maryland, Disputana, Virginia. We're traveling Interstate 95. We're driving on 64. We're crossing the 301 Bridge. There's a lot of risk there for us to drive as well. Having a local place for us to go takes a lot of people off of the roads and it does reduce our exposure to other risks. As far as the local community, as a couple people mentioned, there is nothing that I like better after a day of riding than the quickest place to get some ice cream or a cheeseburger, right? I care about my fitness as well, but I'm old and I like to eat. And we all do, right? So we absolutely support the local communities, both on the way there, when I forget my money to pay to get in the track, I stop and get the local ATM, buy a bunch of snacks. So, uh, we do, we do this, right? We support a lot. And kids, they learn a lot in this sport and they will get hurt. It, it could happen. But without leadership like Randall's and the support from the people at the tracks, they will inevitably get hurt more or have a higher probability of that. And if the kids are going to ride, they're going to ride. Their parents are getting them into it. The best way to get them into it is the right way and that's what he is allowing everyone to do. So I want to leave it with just life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. And I think you can see there's a lot of people in this room that get their happiness from the sport, but we get so much more than the happiness. It's life lessons. So I hope you guys approve it.
Anyone else wish to speak on this application at this time?
Hi, my name is Joel. I actually live in Spotsylvania, but I'm only about 10 minutes from where Randall's track is. My dad actually raced professional as well. So three years old, I was on a dirt bike with train wheels. Four years old, I was already racing. Luckily for us, my grandpa had a farm and we did have our own track. The thing with dirt bikes is whether there's a training facility or not, people are going to ride them. Going back to when my dad was a teenager, the neighbor across the road actually would complain about the noise and tried shutting the track down. However, his son would ride dirt bikes on the road and unfortunately got hit by a car and passed away. Now, had he not been so against maybe and kind of did what Randall's trying to do and allowed there to be a proper place for riding, to keep children off roads, off of private property. I know a ton of friends growing up that they would ride willies down the road. I have a friend that had traumatic brain injury from doing willies on the road. Had we been allowed to invite them to our track to ride without worrying about, you know, if we were going to get complaints or anything like that, it could have kept them from being on the road. Or, you know, I have friends that got arrested for riding on trails that were pipelines, private property, things like that. The main thing is we don't have a place to ride that is legal in this area. We have to drive at least an hour and a half to the closest track. And not, we don't always have that chance. And again, these are just practice tracks. It's not what Randall's trying to do. He is going to have practice on Saturdays, but his main focus is training, which, again, it's a dangerous sport. Everything's dangerous. For instance, I tore my ACL racing dirt bikes about- For instance, I tore my ACL racing dirt bikes about seven months ago. My mom, she tore her meniscus and ACL stepping off a set of stairs. If you're gonna get hurt, you're gonna get hurt whether it's in dirt bikes or not. However, with Randall opening a train facility, he's gonna properly train to help reduce the risk of this. And as far as, I know someone was concerned about cyclists. Most of us actually cycle as a type of training for racing. So ninety percent of us are looking out for that anyways, um, because we, we do it as well. There's been instances where we've seen pro riders that a lot of us look up to, and they've been hit by, you know, vehicles because they're not paying attention, whereas we, being motocross riders and riding bikes and stuff like that, we know to look for those type of things. So nobody that would be attracted to this train.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else out there wish to speak on this application? Is there anyone else out there who wants to be heard on this application? I'm now closing the public hearing. Thank you all for your help. Discussions? Question?
Looking at me. Um, yeah, I can certainly see that Mr. Everett is a well, well-respected professional. So, uh, I would like to take a look at the property. And so I'm, I know that can be set up with staff and Mr. Everett. Because we are setting a precedence here for major businesses to start on Page Road that are non-agricultural. A few other things that I would like, um, I know Mr. Nunnely will keep on top of it, but anything, you know, with environment, you know, give us those reports. And, um, I would like to see, I believe Mr. Everett said he had some letters to present from the neighbors in favor. So staff, uh, you know, I think that's what I heard him say. So staff, if you have those, you know, we'll need copies of those. And I would like to see the gentleman over here, the former commissioner. He had a list of conditions that he suggested. I'd like to see that. And, um, you know, if possible, to see some traffic reports, because, I mean, we're gonna increase traffic in a rural area if it's improved by a lot. And, um, fire and rescue, I know they have no concerns at this time, but I did hear some comments about this. Is any way of knowing anything about that? So that's my thoughts at this time.
Uh, Bob, like, Mr. Chairman, uh, I think a site visit we should do, so we can get the lay of the land.
I, I, I agree two hundred percent. I would like a site visit where we could see this gentleman ride his motorcycle, or whatever you want to call it, so we could actually see what was going on. I mean, I think everything I ever raced was always four wheels, okay? I, I never raced anything on two wheels. But, uh, I think I would like to do that. So I would say, um.
I want to see you ride, George.
Not on two wheels, honey. Not on two wheels. Four wheels, anything. Can I have a motion on this at this time?
Let's see.
Well, we have, you know, we got, um.
Motion to defer.
Christmas, so can we get it in time for the next meeting?
I don't know. It's up to staff.
It's up to you all. Staff could try to work, well, you're going, next meeting's December sixteenth. You could defer to that. You could defer to January. It, it's up to the commission. Staff will attempt to set up.
You know, around the holidays, it gets really tough to, to get.
It would be safer to defer till January, and then that makes sure, to make sure, you know, to be fair to the applicant, I think all of us ought to try to visit all of these applications. I don't care how big or small they are. Should be, I mean, unless we have a really good reason.
Can, can we defer this to?
Keep in mind that you have a hundred days from, from now, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, um, to take action, so.
So anytime in January? What's the first meeting we have in January? What's the scheduled meeting for January?
I don't have a, we haven't actually set, it'll be the same, unless you all change, it's gonna be the fourth Thursday.
That could be my problematic personnel's problem.
Yes. Yeah, so you all, just in your motion, just mention where, where you'd like.
Say, Carol, let's make a motion to defer this until January.
So, I'm looking for. Oh, here it is. Okay, so I would like to, um.
Dr. Horden, you can just, you can just make a motion to defer the application to your January meeting.
Without reading the protocol. So I would like to make a motion that SPEX fifteen twenty twenty-one be deferred to our January meeting.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you for your hard efforts. We'll see you in January. Okay, Mr. Fincham. It's time for new business, Mr. Fincham, or you want to wait for them to leave? Okay.
If everybody could please clear the auditorium, we have additional business that needs to be conducted. Thank you.
Yeah, well, like I said, when you're into a sport like that.
Yeah, I know. You gotta support your pride.
Takes nothing to, to get him involved.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your next item on the agenda is actually a review of a previous recommendation for rezoning to the Board of Supervisors. It's somewhat of a unique situation in that this application, RZ zero three dash twenty-nine, was previously considered by the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission actually forwarded a recommendation of denial to the Board of Supervisors for this rezoning. Uh, if you recall, this is a Virginia bazaar property, at the, uh, southeast quadrant of the I ninety-five Lady Smith Road interchange. The original rezoning application was for, um, basically a general rezoning to M one industrial and commercial with very few limitations on the proposed use. The commission felt that the application at the time was overly broad. There were insufficient protections for the county, uh, as to the development of that property, and forwarded a recommendation to the board, again, with a recommendation of denial. The application sat at the board for over a year because the board had the same concerns of the Planning Commission. It was a general rezoning. There was no specificity to the application. There was no proposed end user. Our ordinance actually discourages speculative rezonings. So the application basically languished at the board, uh, until there was a potential applicant. You may recall that this summer, there was a proposed application for a one, roughly one million square foot warehouse and distribution facility on this site. That the board had concerns that that facility was too large. So the, the applicant, um, withdrew that application. You'll also remember there was a similar facility down in Carmel Church off of Ruth or Glenn Road that the board ultimately approved, and that project is in, in the plan review process right now. So the application continued to sit at the, at the Board of Supervisors pending another prospect. We now have another prospect in the form of Panatoni Development Corporation, who is partnering with, uh, the Virginia Bazaar, uh, and is, is now the applicant in this case. And the board has scheduled a public hearing at its December meeting, uh, to consider that application. However, the board wanted the Planning Commission to have the opportunity to look at this application and, and to comment on the proposed use and identify any questions, concerns, suggestions that the commission might have related to this application. So this is not a formal public hearing before the Planning Commission tonight. Rather, it's a request by the board to you, for you, in light of your previous recommendation of denial, to look at the proposed use for the project now to see if you have any comments, uh, positive, negative. Look at the proffers, uh, which, similar manner that we did with the, the project down in Carmel Church, and to identify any questions, comments, concerns, issues, either pro or con, that, that you see with the application. Um, so that they can take that into consideration at their public hearing in December. Normally, um, we would not allow an applicant to, to make another presentation to the board. Uh, I did discuss, uh, that with the chair. Um, and I think that the applicant giving you an update on what the proposed use is as well as the changes to the proffer since the original application would be beneficial for, for the Planning Commission to hear. To help you, uh, may, maybe address questions you may have, or, or to identify questions that you may have, so. Mr. Chairman, that's my comments at this point in time.
Well, uh, and I thank you, Michael. I just, you know, the last time this came around, you're right, it was, they were looking for car blanch. Just no restrictions, no controls, no anything. And that's why we as planners just said, no, we don't think this is the right thing to do. And, I mean, it looks, I have to be honest, the drawings that I'm looking at, they look very similar to what we've seen, okay? Like, for instance, I looked at this proffer comparison from A to B, which you did a great job of putting the colored ones together, crossing out different ones and so forth and so on. I don't know if you guys actually looked at this, but, I mean, this is, this is, this is pretty intense.
If anybody's colorblind, let me know, and I can change colors.
No, that's all right, Michael. It's very, I'll tell you, I had to be honest. I looked through this very carefully, and, uh, I mean, I have to say that it was very easy to read, very easy to understand, okay? I just think with all of this, I think the traffic impact, which is here, I understand. I still think the traffic impact for this is going to be the same, even though we crossed out some of the things, and now we have, we have better control than we did before. It's still, the traffic impact is that bridge, okay? And we know that. So somewhere along the line, we as commissioners have to say, okay, I think we did a much better job this time, if you look at all these changes that were done. Much better job of controlling what can be built, what may be built. Seeing all of that, um, you know, as a traffic signal warrant did, I mean, I, I, I read all, overall of this guy. I just don't know how to have a lot of faith in what's being proposed versus what was proposed before, okay? Um, and I, I'm not saying this is not better, Michael. This is much, much better, okay? I just, I don't know, commissioners, what do you guys think? I mean, we're only, we're not making a decision on this. We're just looking at it and say, well, what do you think about this? And what do you think about that? And that's the way I'm handling it, correct?
Yes.
That's exactly what I'm handling, okay? I'm not looking for, because we don't get to vote on this. We just get to send this back to the commanders, uh, to the supervisors and say, hey, this is what we think.
I'm just picking back on what you just said, the traffic, uh, look like we're putting more and more in that area, and it need to be improved. We putting the horse before the buggy? I, 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 I don't know.
And, and Purcell, what you're just saying is exactly what I was thinking. I mean, eventually we have to make a decision as to what the Board of Supervisors should be able to do. I think, my opinion again, is we should allow development to take place in that area, because if we don't, that bridge is gonna be like that, and that traffic intersection is gonna be like that forever.
People gotta go to work. I mean, you know, it just.
No, no, Purcell, you're not wrong. I mean, this is why we're talking about it. We're just, we're, we're not. But I think that one of these days, we've got to make a decision that this is a viable piece of land that I think could be an asset to the county. There's not gonna be difficulty, Purcell. You're absolutely right. There's always gonna be problems with the traffic. But look at what happened to Route One. We allowed, we allowed, uh, Airly, Airly to build that whole, to, to design that whole area. I mean, they're, they're talking about three, three hundred thousand square foot buildings on that Airly site. Now, I gotta, Purcell, that's right across, that's right across from my house, okay? I'm not joking. That's right across from my house. I was totally against the thing, but you know what? Guys, when are we gonna, when are we actually gonna consider something to be developed? Just my opinion. I said my piece. Go ahead.
I guess it's the proper area. I mean, that's what we said, Route One and ninety-five. But we have a lot more control over it, I feel like now. We just received part of the proffers tonight, so, uh, you know, I'm not on the up and up on this proper, proffer statement. But, yeah, I mean, there, there needs to be improvements to the roads in that area. But we all know, they don't do that until after, I mean, I mean, yeah. VDOT won't do it until you already have the traffic. It's just always, like you said, Purcell, the, the cart's always before the horse, but, yeah. Uh, and I would just like to encourage, you know, this, these businesses to stay in that area. I mean, they're starting to, as we saw ten minutes ago, they're. I mean, they're starting to, as we saw 10 minutes ago, they're starting to come away from that area. And it's, that's coming, that's coming if we don't be active about trying to.
They just subdivision in that area to use that highway to go to work.
Am I wrong? That's why we're discussing it. By the way, Mike, if, if we say, hey, this is not bad, I would not include these new profferies because we only got them tonight. I mean, I mean, I haven't had actually the time to look at each one of them.
Understood.
I mean, that's okay, I'm just telling you. I still think, guys, I mean, I'd give it to the Board of Supervisors and say, okay, it's time to do something. That's my opinion, okay? That's all I'm going to say to it. It's time to do something.
Yeah, I've got a question. This is probably more for you, Mike. How much property in the county right now is owned as industrial? That's available where somebody could, an applicant could come in and use what's already been zoned for that purpose? Is there available?
Let me clarify that by saying usable or viable, available industrial zone. Because there's a lot of industrial zoning out there, it's wetlands, that's located in an area where we don't have public utilities, so let's take that off the board. In the Lady Smith area, there are four major properties, three of which are under contract or in study periods for acquisition for development. The Airly property that Mr. Weaver referenced, what's called the Good Earth Property, which is off of Green Road, back near the convenience center site of, of Green Road. A little industrial piece in between those two. There is another industrial piece of about 100 acres on Route 639 east of this property that is, that is under consideration. And there is some industrial land on the north side of 639, Lady Smith Industrial Park and back towards 95. Having calculated the actual percentage or numbers, but I'm going to say probably 80% of the industrial land in the Lady Smith area that is readily available is under, either under contract or in a study period.
And Carmel Church, is there land available there?
Carmel Church, actually there, there's some land. Perhaps not quite as much available. There's an 80 acre parcel on Ruth or Glenn Road, which is going south of 207. There's actually a couple of parcels there that the county is potentially looking at rezoning to industrial from, from commercial or some other zoning designation. I would also point out that, excuse me, even under the B1 regs, this type of use is permitted through a special exception permit. So with, with B1 zoning, somebody could come in, make application for a special exception permit for basically this same facility.
So that's light warehousing?
Light warehousing distribution. So I think the reason perhaps that has not been pursued is because the rezoning was already in process. So the Economic Development Director would, would say to you that we are running out of zoned industrial sites for warehouse and distribution facilities.
So I guess the second piece of that is, you know, the B1 zoning. You know, this would be taken away from how much property we have or land that's zoned as B1. Can you speak to how much of that is still available and, you know?
B1, well, basically you have the entire 639 corridor from 95 through the traffic light at Route One to include the Pickett property. You have the area south of Lady Smith Crossing, which was the old Walmart site. All that area, south Green Road, that's undeveloped now, is currently planned for commercial development. There isn't as much commercial development pressure on the commercial land that we have available. I mean, you can see how long it's taken us to get the sheets, okay? Walmart kind of fell through because of the economic conditions. Walmart stopped building new stores and went to their online sales model. So the, we have a lot of commercially zoned land. We have a lot of land area that's actually planned for commercial development. But the development pressure for that commercial development is not very strong.
Okay. So I guess a couple of other clarification questions for me. It looks like it's a 570,000 square foot facility, right? And there's 184,000 square foot of mezzanine space.
Yes.
That's, and it says storage area only. So that's like two levels, so.
Yes, you have, you have a section where it's two levels stored, yes, sir.
So when I looked at the applicant's package, it looks like it's 700,000 square feet. And I'm assuming they're combining those two numbers?
Yes, if you include the mezzanine area as, as additional storage.
And this may just be for my benefit, but the initial million square foot, did that include the mezzanine as well? Or was that?
I don't think that was specifically called out. I think they just looked at the, the gross floor area.
Okay. So I would say this, you know, my, you know, when I look at this, I do live in that area. I do travel that roadway quite a bit. I do get on and off of those interchanges. You know, obviously there's traffic, can be traffic issues at any point. And, you know, peak traffic times are a challenge even now without additional, you know, traffic. When you talk about, I looked at the number of trips in and out, that's a lot. I mean, that is a lot of traffic in and out of a facility like that. It, it concerns me to some extent that are we deterring other B1 applicants from an area when you start to do everything industrial? You know, so I would be concerned about that. I did go to the comprehensive plan and look at that, but you know, that's maybe not the best source to guide decisions right now because it seems like it really needs a lot of work. So I do have concerns about the amount of traffic. I looked at the proffers, you know, 150,000, it looks like that's predominantly for lights. Yeah. I don't know that lights are going to do it. You know, I look at, you know, I'm thinking turning lanes, you know, especially if there are trucks, you know, not just cars. We're talking tractor trailers, I'm assuming. I would, I have grave concerns about that amount of traffic without significant upgrades to that interchange, so.
Yeah, and I think the issue there becomes the, basically the proportionate fair share of of the applicant's cost to those improvements. I think you're right. The original Route 639 Improvement Plan called for turn lanes at both the, the north and southbound onramps to 95. VDOT's pared that back a little bit. It's possible, and we can certainly talk to VDOT about whether they could, would reconsider that as part of this. I, I think the issues are, you, you have some of the same issues regardless of whether this property is developed commercially or industrially. 97 acres of B1 zoning, you could put a lot of development on there that generates a lot of vehicle trips. Arguably even more per day than, than this use would, would, would create, so. You've got some of the same traffic concerns. In B1, would it be is heavily truck intensive? Probably not. But in terms of trip generation itself, at full buildout, you're probably looking at comparable numbers based on the zoning that's there now compared to, to this use. This use obviously would come sooner if it's approved than the full buildout under a B1, the current B1 zoning. So it would give you more time. At the end of the day, the county is going to have to make application through the smart scale process to upgrade that bridge at some point in time. And, and is part of that evaluation process, VDOT is going to look at the traffic, the level of service, things like that. Yes, we already know there's a failing level of service during certain hours of the day for some of your turn movements. But in some respects, you're almost, it's going to have to get worse before VDOT will step in and actually make an improvement. So I'm not, I'm not trying to say you should develop for the sake of development to, to, to create a problem. But in reality, VDOT doesn't fix anything in advance, in anticipation of a problem.
Understand. Yeah, so those are, those are, you know, my comments, you know. I definitely appreciate you guys and I'd actually see you more for what you have to say.
Well, I guess, I mean, I think, like, the traffic has always been an issue with whatever we develop over there because even if you say we put in business or shopping centers or, it's still that same problem, okay? And, and I like the way this is developed this time because at least I believe that we have some control of what might be developed there. Other than that, Mike, I don't think there's much we can say to the supervisors. I mean, I wish you guys think something.
I have a quick question of you all, and I know it's really late. Does anybody else besides me read the various social media sites and the comments from the citizens? About, okay. I mean, I don't usually comment back, but they, that side of the county wants growth. Of course, I mean, they don't understand what it takes. They don't understand the process. They don't, it's, it's just, they want, they don't understand why they don't have a Chick-fil-A. You know, so I would just like, I mean, if they want it, I would like to keep it over there. You know, and I'd like the eastern side to stay rule, you know? I know there's only so much, you know, we can do. And that the comprehensive plan is a, a plan, it's not zoning, it's, you know, it's a goal. But yeah, they, they, the comments are comical, but yeah. And it goes on and on about what's missing.
So I do talk to, you know, constituents in that area, or not my constituents, obviously, but county residents. And, you know, so, so I do hear that people want more, you know, a Chick-fil-A, a Cracker Barrel. You know, something along those lines, but what I don't hear and what I do hear concerns about is a facility that would have this many trips going in and out because a lot of them do commute. And, you know, obviously cars generate one thing. You know, I drive, you know, I commute as well, but cars are one thing, trucks are another. You know, when you're in traffic with cars, that's, you know, I, I get that. When you're in traffic with trucks, it's a different ballgame, you know? So I, I do hear some of the, a lot of those things too.
They, some, what, some of what we're dealing with though, until we have a certain amount of other type of industry in that area and a certain amount of houses, you know, that's when Chick-fil-A won't come. That's, they base it on demographics and stuff. I'm still trying to convince people that we didn't chase Walmart off. It's just surprising. They thought we ran them off.
So say, guys, you had enough, Mike? Do you have enough information from us?
I've got my notes.
Yeah, but I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I, I have no reply, no comment on this part because I just haven't studied it yet.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I haven't had a chance to absorb the, the new proffers either and they don't want us to put it off until after, they don't want us putting it off until after, after their next meeting, but
Do, do, Michael, do they really want this answer, like, for their next meeting?
The, the board has scheduled a public hearing unless the applicant requests that that be deferred. I will tell you that the board basically gave the applicant until December to get their application back to the board and to have a public hearing if necessary because they were tired of the zoning being continued time and time again.
So we could go back, we could give these proffer statements, we could give them to the Board of Supervisors at that time in December?
December 14th, I think, is their meeting.
When is on, is on next?
It's actually before your regularly scheduled meeting.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to give some kind of input to the Board of Supervisors based on this data. But, I mean, to get it to them before they have their next meeting.
No, I think you give it based upon what you had when the packets went out.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I, I, you know, yes, new information came, you have not had a chance to, to review that. I, I think it's perfectly acceptable for you to say your, any comments you give are based upon the materials that you received in your packet.
See, because, I mean, as I told you, I liked what you crossed out here and I could see the difference and so forth and so on. I think it's a much better control over what we had before. But as you can hear from all of us, especially from our area side, not your, your town, our area town, we're concerned about the traffic, Mike. I mean, it's, it's always been that same situation. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Okay, Liam?
Better proffers, concerned about traffic.
That's correct. That's the two biggest things, Michael. Look, I like, I like the way this, you did this, this guy, because I mean, it's good control over what they could build there. So, okay, guys, I'm done for tonight.
For me.
Eddie and all matters. Can I have, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting to December 16th meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor? opposed? During none, motion carries.
During none, motion carries.